Morning, everyone, and welcome to the January 2025 Meeting of the Oldham County Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm Greg King. If everyone would please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, everyone. And at this time also, would everybody please join me? Silence those electronics for the duration of the hearing. All right, first order of business, approval of minutes. Can we go ahead and get a motion on the floor? Ms. Jones, thank you. Have a second? Ms. Kraus, please.
I have one.
All right, well, let's go ahead and start talking about those.
It's, oh, I'm sorry. It says Commissioner David. I think that's Davis.
All right, anything else? Anyone else?
No.
All right, oh, second. Did we get a second, Ms. Kraus? Was that your second that I saw?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor. No further corrections. We'll do this by voice vote. All in favor of approving the minutes as corrected, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed like sun, and the minutes are approved. All right, moving into first docketed item. Ms. Edgar, can you please read the docket?
Do you want us to swear a staff in?
We'll get there.
Okay. Docket PZ-24-022. Application has been filed by Kristi Nash for a waiver of access easement with, for a proposed minor plat at 6,000 Old LaGrange Road, Crestwood. The property is 8.405 acres in Zone R2 Residential District, tabled from December 2024 hearing.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And Ms. Barge, you'll have staff's presentation?
Ah, we do. Can you get a little closer to the mic when you say that?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Your notes indicate it was previously tabled, and actually, Mr. Douglas pointed out to me that that was the case, so it needs to be removed from the table to be considered.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Do you have a motion for us?
I do. I make the motion that we bring this back onto our agenda for today, and I think that was scheduled based upon the agreement that was made in the last meeting we had.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. And we have a motion and a second. Mr. Counsel, is there a need for a vote on this?
I don't think so, Mr. Chairman.
All right, let's go. Ms. Barge, you'll have staff's presentation? I want to do that when we're ready. Yes, if you're ready now, we'll go ahead and get staff sworn before you get underway.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
All right, Ms. Barge.
Good morning. Anna Barge, Senior Planner. So, as Kristi mentioned, this is the waiver of access easement width that we're considering today for a different Kristi, Kristi Nash, at 6,000 Old LaGrange Road in Crestwood. So, this is the docket that Ms. Edgar read off earlier about an application filed for Kristi Nash for the waiver of access easement width. So, the zoning for this property is R2 Residential. The current land use is residential. It's 8.405 acres. So, there's no site history on this property. The case history, so this was posted to the county website on December 30th of last year. The adjoining property owner notices went out January 13th of this month, or this year, and then public notices appeared in the Oldham era on January 16th. So, the parcel is outlined in red here. Currently, this strip of land is deeded to them. It's not an access easement. It's actually a deeded parcel of their land, and so they're asking to create an access easement because they're creating two new parcels. So, I just want to make that clear, that this is deeded, this flagpole is deeded to them as regular property, and the reason they need an access easement is for the two new parcels that they're trying to create, which is, and this is 20 feet in width, so that's why they will, and I'll go more into detail, but that's why they need a waiver today. So, the zoning, like I said, is R2, and then you'll see that there is some CO1 zoning here. But that is not, the CO1 zoning is not on their property. So, the applicant is seeking a minor plat, which will include an access easement to the two new parcels created, with each new parcel being 1.25 acres, and the remaining will attract being 5.315 acres. The proposed new parcels will also be flag lots according to Section 5.7, Part I of the subdivision regulations. Flag lots shall only be permitted in situations where the geometric or topographic constraints make it impractical to conveniently satisfy, or conventionally satisfy, a lot with requirements, or where the lot created is of sufficient size and located in an area where it will be suitable for division in the future. So, for the purpose of access, and this all comes out of our subdivision regulations, for the purpose of access, flag lots must have a deeded strip of land referred to as the panhandle extending to a public street or private road. Single flag lots shall have a minimum deeded panhandle width of 40 feet. Where contiguous flag lots are created at the same time, a proper access easement for a common driveway shall be required, and a maintenance agreement shall be required for all access easements. So, here is where that is in our regulations. This is in your staff report. I did highlight it. So, the requirement for width of access easement is 40 feet. The width of the current access, which is really just a deeded property, but where they would currently be accessing it is 20 feet. That flagpole is currently 20 feet, and so to create that access easement, they do need 40 feet in width. So, the applicant is requesting the planning commission grant a waiver of the width requirement because the applicant is unable to expand the width of the access easement. So, as you can see here, our subdivision regulations require access easements to be 40 feet wide. So, this was the consolidation plat that was done in 1995, before the current applicant owned the property. This is probably kind of hard to see, but this is Old LaGrange Road up here at the top, and then this is where, this is the 60-foot access easement where the applicant is currently accessing. These two tracks were consolidated, so they're currently accessing from here, although I don't believe the driveway follows the 60-foot access easement, but that's not what is being considered today. What is being considered today is this flagpole here, which you can see is 20.48 feet wide. So, this is the preliminary plat that was done. This shows going out to Old LaGrange Road. This is where the barn and the house are that access off of this access easement here, and so they're hoping to create an access easement through here for these two new 1.25 acre parcels. So, in summary, a waiver of the required access easement width of 20 feet is being requested. As you can see, there's 40 feet required. They're trying to do 20, which would be a 20-foot difference. So, the waiver shall only, potential conditions of approval are standard. The waiver shall only apply to the plan reviewed at today's January 28th, 2025, Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing. The second one is that a shared road maintenance agreement shall be prepared and agreed upon by all parties affected and recorded with the minor plat. So, even if the applicant owns all parcels, they do need to have that maintenance agreement recorded with the plat. Do we have any questions for me?
All right, questions for Ms. Barge? Mr. Douglas?
Can you go back to the slide of the original plat?
Yes.
Where you discuss about the 20.48 feet easement that's on that plat?
So, it's actually not an easement. The only easement that's on this plat is this 60-foot one on the left side, right here. That is the only easement on this property. Currently, this flagpole is actually deeded to them as land, like typical land, like any other part of the parcel. So, the reason they're having to make that an access easement is because they're creating the two new parcels. So, it's actually deeded to them separately, and the only access easement they currently have is the 60-foot there. So, they're allowed currently to use this as a driveway if they wanted to for their existing parcel, because they do own that land. But if they were adding any additional parcels, they would have to create it as an access easement.
So, it wasn't designated as a utility easement?
No, it was created as-
Just created as a deeded lot?
Yeah, it's part of their lot, existing lot, yeah.
Okay. So, I guess I'm trying to, and I'm going to ask the applicant this, but in your old staff report, you indicated, I guess, in their portion, that the width of the current access easement is 20 feet. Was that-
So, there's actually not. So, we were discussing it further, and we realized that there's not currently the access. This is not, the applicant in their application said this was an access easement, but that's incorrect. This is actually deeded property of theirs. And when we looked at the deed and all of the history within the deed room, this, there is no such easement here. It's just deeded property. So, there is no actual easement. Would you like to clarify?
So, technically, I'll ask the applicant that.
Yeah. They have to create an easement as part of-
So, they've got to create a whole new easement?
Right, which will be-
They don't have an access easement.
Right, it's just part of their property. So, if their property was shaped in a T, and they used the long part of the T as their driveway, then that would be part of it. But because they're creating new parcels, then that's when they have to, they're going to be sharing that, the flagpole now with the two new parcels.
So, did staff look at the possibility of doing the 40-foot easement off the 60-foot right-of-way?
So, the applicant can discuss that further. They, right now, there's more than the allowed amount of people, parcels using that 60-foot access easement, and so they would have to get a waiver, just like we're seeing on some of the other cases today, or it'd have to be created as a private road, and I'll let them speak to that. But I believe the neighbor that technically owns that is not interested in making it a private road.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Further questions? Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Marsh? One of the requirements you said was the, it'll be in an area where it's suitable for further division in the future. The way the lots were set up there, is that going to landlock the five acres, or is there future development opportunity to continue that?
So, I mean, as you can see it now, it's kind of landlocked, except for this, the pole, the flag. Now, on its ability to be further divided, I know there were some, we have our GIS addresser here. I know that there were some concerns with that, but I don't, I'm not the official addresser, so I can't tell you how many addresses are available in that location, or if, what accommodations could be made for addresses.
So, if the deed goes, to the panhandle goes to that first lot, then the five-acre lot is landlocked?
Correct.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Marsh? Anyone else? Anything further from staff?
Will you put up the new plat for us, please?
Yeah.
Did you, did you say that the existing five-acre parcel will take access off of this proposed driveway, or will they remain taking access where they take it at now?
They will remain taking access where they take access now, in that 60-foot access easement. And they can clarify in case they plan to change that, but I don't believe, and they are more than welcome to correct me if I'm wrong.
Mr. Douglas, please.
Could I have the county engineer? I know you do roads.
Yes.
20-foot easement, access for large equipment, like fire departments, access on 20-foot, turnabout, radius, how does that work?
Well, Jim Silman, county engineer, 100 West Jefferson, the radii for the entrance would probably be within the old LaGrange right-of-way, so I'm thinking you could fit those in. The 40 feet, and we've talked about this in the office, is that's typically, and I think you mentioned it, to accommodate the driveway and utilities that would need separation. So, the applicant should speak to the ability to get utilities back there. As far as emergency vehicle access, I don't know. Could you answer that, as far as the ability to get a truck back there?
He doesn't want to. It's not his territory.
It is 20 feet, and again, if you were asking about the radii for the entrance, those could likely fall within Old LaGrange road right-of-way.
I'm talking about when they get back to the property.
Well, we've not seen how they're, I mean, we don't see how they're going to actually loop the driveway and get those radii back on the property. We're really just concerned about it at the front.
Okay. I'll ask the applicant some of those questions. Thank you very much.
All right, further questions? All right, Ms. Barge, anything additional from staff?
No, that's all.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Barge. We'll now move into presentation from applicant.
Hello, John Talbot. My address is 1,000 North Hurstborn Parkway, Louisville, Kentucky, 40223. Can you all hear me okay? I can't tell if the microphone is picking me up or not.
Yeah, stay close to it. But will you have anyone else testifying today?
I will, and so you might want to get us all sworn in at the same time.
Let's go ahead and get sworn, okay?
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
I do. Now, thank you all very much for your time. The people that just got sworn in are the applicants, Glenn and Kristi Nash. It's their property, and then the other folks with them are their family, their son and daughter, who also probably give a little bit of testimony today. We are here for a waiver. This property was subdivided 30 years ago and approved by this very commission, the planning commission. It is obvious what that flagpole was prepared for 30 years ago, and here we are today to use it just for that. It's understanding that the regulations have changed on the right-of-way since that time, which is creating the issue for us today. And I'll get into that a little bit as we go through the presentation. Effectively, what the Nash's want to use this property for, and what they purchased it for, is so that they could use the two subdivided lots for their family members, being their son and daughter, and to have their grandchildren on the lot with them. That's the purpose of it, and hopefully you all can understand people wanting to have their family and extended family together. You all can see the address for the property on this slide. If you all could flip to the next slide, or do I, I do that myself. I forget. Some of these places, I don't do it myself. This is the lot as it exists today, and as Ms. Barge mentioned, the, most of the large part of that lot was a consolidation of two lots that were already there. So, 30 years ago, it was actually split as two lots. You had one where the home is today, and then effectively you had the other side. That flagpole was preserved specifically to give access to that side of the lot. What you, it's a little bit hard to see in this picture, but what exists is you have a stream flowing between the house and where you would have that access. So, it could be done, but it would be very expensive to get access from the current access easement and get it all the way over to the other side, because you would have to build a bridge to get across that creek. And obviously, with the creek, unless it's a really big bridge, that could create conditions to get to that side of the property. Also, as Ms. Barge mentioned, the access easement that exists, we've, there's enough homes on it. It's already at the maximum level, and so if we tried to use that, we would have to get permission from you all. Very likely, we would have to get permission from the other homeowners also using that, and there's no guarantee that they would give us that access. And so, we are preferring to go the way that it was, the property was set up 30 years ago, and use it for the exact purpose that we're here for today. Again, I've kind of got a little bit ahead of myself. That shows the current access easement and also the current home, again, which would be on the, see, it would be on the west side of the property, and the east side is the part that we're trying to get access to now. This is the, this is the plat from 30 years ago. Again, it shows that access, and I have probably, I guess in terms of access easement, we're getting into a little bit of wordsmithing on what that word means. This can be used today for their cars. They can drive up and down it. If they wanted to create a driveway on it, they could do that. There's nothing to prohibit them from doing that, as Ms. Barge mentioned. So, when I talk about an access, it is an access to their property that can be used and could be used without any permission at all today. What we would be doing with these subdivided lots is no different. You're adding two lots. That is not significant. Right now, we could use it for one. By approving this waiver, it could be used for two. That's not going to be overloading that road, or that what would be their driveway whatsoever. What also wanted to point out again, this was approved by this planning commission in 1995, and so it has been approved. I think anybody with your old's knowledge level, and especially the folks that were here to vote in favor of the approval for the consolidation in 1995, recognize what that is for. It is obvious what a flagpole is for. It is to gain access to your property. We believe that approval in 1995 gives us, gives us a constitutionally vested right to continue using that, even for this subdivision. And so, if the waiver is denied, we think we've got rights to go beyond that, to get it, to go to the courts and get approval to use that. We would rather not do that. It would be expensive, and we would prefer to get the waiver here today to make it more clean and clear. This shows the 20-foot access easement that we proposed with this new subdivision. Again, you can see the two lots pretty clearly that they would put on for their son and daughter. And again, to come down the old access easement, we would have to get permission and a waiver for that, and we would additionally have to go to the expense of building a bridge, which is not nearly as convenient. We want to use the, the flagpole that already exists there today. This shows the, the way the property looks today, and what you're looking, you're looking down Old LaGrange Road, looking west. That fence you see in that house, that is where our flagpole runs alongside, and we would be on the side that you're, that you see, where on, the flagpole is on that side of the fence. The fence is basically the property line to go into the other neighbor's property. This is looking east, so you're just on the other side of that fence, and so now you're looking to the other side of the fence where the flagpole would go down. And here is looking directly down the flagpole. You can see, the picture on the left is a little bit closer to Old LaGrange Road. The picture on the right is going pretty far down that, that flagpole. You can even see, if you look closely in the right-hand picture, some tire marks. So, it has even been used today. The biggest thing about having the right-of-way of 40 feet, it serves, that regulation serves some specific purposes. One, as Jim Silman mentioned, to make sure you can get utilities to the properties. Two is to make sure you've got room for future growth. For instance, if it's an area of property that's likely to be opened up, the county has its own interest to make sure there's proper right-of-way if the road ever needs to be expanded. And then, lastly, you've got the issue of sidewalks. So, if it ever became a big development, you may want sidewalks, and sidewalks might be appropriate, and that right-of-way would be necessary. None of those are issues today. We have access, this slide shows that we have access to electric. There's already poles and electric lines basically going down that flagpole that supply the electricity, so we have no issue with electrical being supplied to those extra two lots. Water, Mr. Nash has also already checked with the water company. Water is available. He would get a, you can get a temporary meter installed, and then after you get the temporary meter installed, you can get a permanent meter installed. There's no issues, and if you'll have some specific questions about that, I would bring Mr. Nash up to testify on that a little bit further. But water utilities is not an issue at all. Lastly, wastewater treatment, like a lot of homes and lots in this area, we would probably go off septic tanks. This, regardless of your old's waiver, they would have to go and get approval from the health department in order to get a building permit. If we can't get the health department's approval, then they're not going to be to build on it. So, that really is not an issue for today, but my point is, we think we can get that, and that should not be an issue at all. It's not an issue that we're going to need to get sewers down those, that line, and then need to have an easement for sewers. That's not the way we would go about it, and if Charlie Ward does not give us the approval, well, they're just simply not going to be able to build those lots. The last two things I also mentioned for future growth, obviously, for, if you look at the property and on the, or think about the property from those prior slides, two extra lots is not going to create a situation where you need an expanded road, or you need sidewalks. So, all of the purposes for the right-of-way being 40 feet, which again, is a legitimate concern for the county, do not exist in this, this capacity. So, to get the waiver, Section 9.1, which I think you all are familiar with, there's two sections, A and B, of this regulation to give the waiver. We think we qualify under both of those, but I think B is probably the, the most applicable design innovation. These regulations may be modified by the commission, so you have the full authority to grant this waiver. In the case of plans for complete neighborhoods, which our subdivision- the case of plans for complete neighborhoods, which our subdivision would be, it qualifies as a complete neighborhood, or other design innovation, which in the commission's opinion still achieves the basic objectives of the regulation. Again, the basic objective is to make sure utilities can be supplied if you have needs for future growth, for road expansion or sidewalks. We meet all of those. You do not need it for future expansion, and we also can get all the utilities that we need. So we achieve all the basic objectives of the regulation. This section, Section 7.2, is not directly on point, but I do think it, it shows some of the intent behind your own regulations. This is talking about road capacity. The purposes of road capacity standards, which can also often prevent future development and subdivision of land, is to maintain an acceptable level of road services. In our case, we've got the right-of-way. It's to make sure that y'all can get proper services for utilities and future growth. But it says right here, to, it's got to be defined while allowing new development to occur. There is an emphasis on allowing new development to occur. The regulations are not supposed to be just reflexively enforced without any reason or thought. The reason or thought is for the reasons that I already mentioned that do not exist in this case. Secondly, exceptional hardship. Exceptional hardship is not defined in your regulation. What I would contend is that what exceptional hardship means is that it makes your property unviable to do the things that you should be able to do on it. The flagpole, which was approved 30 years ago, clearly shows the intent of the planning commission of what that was supposed to be. There's nobody that could, on this commission, I think, can honestly contend that that flagpole was ever conceived to be anything other than access to that part of the property. That it says the commission finds that strict compliance with these regulations would create an undue hardship because of exceptionally unique topographic and other natural or man-made physical conditions. We have both natural and the man-made physical condition. The man-made condition is that the flagpole was created for that purpose 30 years ago. We should be able to use it. The natural topographical conditions deal with the stream that runs through the middle of the property before those two lots were consolidated in 1995. It is, there's no logical reason to require the expense to go over that, and also requires us to come forward for a waiver to boot. Think about that. To use that other access easement, we would have to have additional expense and a waiver like we're here for today to do the exact same thing we're here, asking to do today. We're asking to save the expense, which makes perfect economic sense, and also to get the waiver, to make it more simple. And so, we think we qualify for the waiver under both conditions of 9.1. Again, all the utilities are available. There's no needed for expanded width of the future right-of-way for the future needs. No sidewalks would be needed. And that's it. So thank you all very much for your time. I think a couple of the Nash's might want to give a couple of comments, but thank you very much for your time, and we're here to answer any questions that you all have.
Thank you, Mr. Talbot. For those who wish to speak, this is your moment. When you come to the podium, we'd like to get your name and address for the record.
Hi there. My name is Brooke Wellington. I currently live at 3,200 Lake Point Court. That's in Crestwood, 40014. I am very excited about the potential to move a lot closer to my family. I have two kids who currently go to Crestwood Elementary and Oldham County Preschool, and they're also very excited to live close to their cousin. And yeah, do you have any questions for me?
We'll come to that.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Kyle Nash. I currently reside at 4101 Northumberland Drive, Louisville, Kentucky, 40245. As you can see, I currently have a daughter and would love to be able to raise her close to my family. We actually lived in Florida for quite a bit of time, moved down there for the job, and sole reason we came back was because we had a daughter and wanted to be able to raise our daughter and future kids close to our family and have the help. So being able to do that would be a huge help to that, and would love to be able to have them help us raise our kids and our family for a long time to come.
Very well. Thank you. Anyone else present wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application? All right, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this application or with questions? Please approach. Get your name and address for the record, and we'll get you sworn, okay?
Good morning, sir. Neil Salier with Brown Law. Our address is 18 Berry Street, Newcastle, Kentucky, 40050.
Are you counsel?
Yes, sir.
We will not need to swear. All right, floor's yours. Can we reset that time?
I also have printed copies, if anybody would like a copy of the PowerPoint. So again, my name's Neil Salier. I'm here to represent the neighbors of the flagpole. They are William Kenneth Logsdon, who I believe has submitted a written document, Kathy Shadburn-Reed, and Steve Reed. We've all seen what it, what the flagpole looks like. My clients own the property on both sides from start to finish of what that flagpole actually is. The, the addresses for my properties, or my clients' properties, are 5,900 Old LeGrange Road, 5,902 Old LeGrange Road, and 5,906 Old LeGrange Road. The petitioners, as opposing counsel said, or as counsel said, recently purchased at 6,000 Old LeGrange Road, best described as a flaglot with a 50, with a 50-foot flagpole extending from their property to Old LeGrange Road. Flagpoles have always been utilized, this one has, for utility access. While it wasn't specifically designated as utility access, that's all that's really ever been done on it. When my clients purchased the property a decade ago, that's what they were dealing with. There's electric power lines and guy wires on LeGrange, on Old LeGrange Road at the beginning. There are power lines going back and forth. There are other utilities. It's what it's always been. The variance request that they're asking is to reduce from 40 feet, which is the requirement, all the way down to 20 for a required road, for a private road. So we've gone through these regulations, but I think it's important to say them again. The flaglot requirements for a deeded panhandle has to be 40 feet. Proper access easement is encouraged, and a maintenance agreement's required. For private roads, the standards, again, minimum right-of-way width for a private road is 40 feet. Minimum pavement width, excluding curbs and shoulders, for this road is 20 feet. The expectation is that curbs and gutters will be required, and if they're not, you have to have a shoulder of at least four feet on each side. Now, in, I believe it was 95, when that initial plat was written, there was one piece of property there. And as such, they didn't require that a road, a formal road be built. So to argue now that you can use a 20-feet flagpole to achieve what's necessary for 40 feet is fairly extensive, and it really begins to impede, or significantly impedes, on the neighboring properties. A waiver is only going to be granted by this counsel without detriment to the public good, without impairing the purpose, basic objectives, and intent of the regulations, and without impairing the desirable general development of the neighborhood and community. And counsel talked about exceptional hardships earlier, but exceptional hardships are defined. They're defined as exceptionally unique topographical or other natural physical conditions, such as, I don't know, if, if a cliff is on one side of the property, or because of exceptional, unique, man-made physical conditions. We'll come back to this slide at the end, but it's important to remember that when this property was purchased not long ago, it was clear that this wasn't an access easement, that it was a 20-foot flagpole, and that even when the property was purchased, it wouldn't meet the requirements to have a road built down to further subdivide that property out. So our oppositional arguments are drainage issues, safety concerns, utility relocation issues, violation of zoning goals, and frankly, an overall negative impact on my client's adjacent properties. So we've heard, you know, a variance for 20 feet, taking down from 40 feet. Well, how wide is 20 feet? And more importantly, uh-oh. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. So, again, my clients have property that's adjacent on, on both sides of this flaglot. So this picture here on the far left, we're standing inside the fence line, and again, you heard accurately that the fence line runs the entire length of one side of this flagpole. Standing inside, right here, at the edge of this fence line, as a walkway through, if you go over here to this concrete building, there's a piece of landscaping timber that sets, I don't know, maybe a foot and a half off of the concrete building. From the middle of this, or from the end of this fence to that piece of landscaping timber, is exactly 20 feet. Now, here, this stake here is the property line. From there, again, to the edge of this fence, exactly 20 feet.
Mr. Salier?
Yes, sir.
So the commissioners cannot see what you're pointing at there, but your touchscreen.
Okay, got it. So from here, this flag, this pole post, to here, the edge of this fence, is exactly 20 feet. Now, cameras can, of course, distort a little bit of what the width looks like. So this picture here on the far right is standing right at this to look down the hill. So if you imagine being in the middle here, looking down the hill, you see how much 20 feet is going all the way over to the fence line. It's already falling off onto my client's property. You can see here, this middle, with a truck that's actually going down where the road is projected, or where the road is requested, how it begins to fall off and fall into my client's property. Up here, again, you have electric poles, you have trees that are, that are grown over. And again, what we discussed earlier, from there, that piece of landscaping timber to this fence is exactly 20 feet with zero room for air. So the first thing I want to talk about are the drainage issues that come that will affect my clients. Again, standards require that private roads either require curbs and gutters or a shoulder with four feet. That's for proper drainage, prevent flooding, erosion, structural damage to surrounding properties. The issue with a 20-foot road, if we take it down from 40 to 20, is that there's no room for a proper drainage infrastructure because the standards say you have to have at least 20 feet of concrete or 20 feet of pavement. So if we go back to this picture here, and we think about the way this falls off, not only does there need to be drainage, but there has to be retaining wall or something. So if you start building a retaining wall on this 20 feet, that's going to take it even farther in. So the fact that they have a 20-foot flagpole, in my opinion, does not give the necessary width for them to be able to effectively build a road to reach the proposed subdivision in the back. We've talked about the fence. We've talked about the concrete structures. Those are going to exacerbate the drainage challenges because it's going to create a bottleneck for water flow. From Old LeGrange Road to the end of this flagpole, it goes down. I could only imagine, based on, you know, what I've seen over the years with, with, with hard rains, the amount of water that will begin to pull at the top and work its way all the way down if there's not proper, if there's not proper drainage taken care of. And without proper drainage, if you look here at these pictures, the way that this land flows, it all flows over onto my client's property, off this hill, off of this 20-foot pole, right down into their front yard. And if a formal road's built without proper drainage, without retaining walls, it, it could just simply wash away their house. Next, let's talk about safety concerns. National Fire Protection Association requires a minimum of 20 feet of clear driving space for emergency vehicles. Again, this, the, the Oldham County Building Codes require 20 feet of pavement at a minimum. The problem is, if you only have 20 feet of pavement with nothing else on either side, there's little room for error to be made when you're driving these emergency vehicles. They can't safely navigate. They can't pass other vehicles on a 20-foot roadway. This could cause, depending on the amount of traffic, should this, it be subdivided further out, potential delays in emergency response times, which of course leads to the increase in a risk of property damage, loss of life, et cetera. I think there is a mention about postal services and non-sequential addresses. My clients have already seen issues because the, the, the mailing addresses don't run continuously now to where emergency services have, have had an issue in finding the correct address. Allowing further, more addresses that are non-sequential is just going to exacerbate the problem. And they, again, they've already seen that. Now, we're here today because Oldham County has zoning and planning regulations that have to be followed. Those zoning regulations ensure orderly development that balances landowners' rights with the welfare of the community. It protects against incompatible use, poor planning outcomes. We know that we continue to try to get away from flaglots because of their negative impact on property cohesion, which is exactly what we're talking about here today, when we start talking about emergency services and postal code issues and, and, and things like that. The petitioners knew that they were purchasing a flaglot when they bought it recently. They knew the restrictions, understood the restrictions, understood that, yeah, for one piece of property that they purchased, they could have used that 20-foot flagpole as a driveway. But to be able to subdivide it out for more families, more pieces of property, it requires more when it comes to, to roads and to the regulations that go along with it. We don't, we're asking you to deny this because we don't believe that, that passing this, or allowing this, is going to prioritize a single property owner's convenience over the safety, the stability, and the rights surrounding the neighbors, which is inconsistent with the zoning goals that have been put in place when it comes to flaglots, flagpole extensions. Now, I said we would come back to this, and they requested waivers. A waiver may only be granted without detriment to the public good. Again, I think if you think of the drainage Again, I think if you think of the drainage issues and the families who are affected on both sides of this property, it's, it's difficult to discuss and sign off on public good without impairing the purpose, the basic objectives, and the intent of the regulations. The requirements of a 40-foot road are there for a reason and have been there for a reason. And to reduce it to 20, and to try to shoehorn in all the requirements of a, of a, of a road that will protect not only the petitioners or the applicants, but my clients as well, it seems nearly impossible. And we don't want to impair the general development of the neighborhood. I mean, again, there's potential that this could be subdivided more, and to not have a proper roadway going to it is just going to, it's, it's just going to impair the neighborhood's value, it's going to impair my, my client's property values, and so forth. Now, there's no exceptional hardship here for the council to look at, or there's no undue hardship because there's no exceptional, unique, topographical, or other natural physical, natural physical conditions. Again, this is, the reason we're here has nothing to do with topographical issues or natural physical conditions, or even man-made physical conditions. The reason we're here is because when this lot was plotted, it was plotted with a 20-foot flag, or excuse me, a 20-foot flagpole off of this lot. No other reason. There's no other exceptional, unique, man-made or topographical condition. So in closing, I'll reassert what I said. The challenges here are a narrow driveway width, drainage and erosion issues, safety and emergency response issues, utility issues and relocations that are not agreeable, to be clear. Significant utility relocation will have to happen in the event that this variance is approved. And again, it's a violation of the zoning goals that have been written and enacted. So we request denial of, of the waiver request. Any questions?
We'll come to that. Thank you. Anyone else present wishing to speak in opposition to this application or with questions about this application? Ms. Barge?
Would you like me to share your clients, what they sent in?
Yes, I'd be great.
I have it.
Okay.
Anna Barge, I'm going to show, I have everything saved on a folder that his clients sent to me. Actually, two different folders. So I'm going to start with Ken Loggston. I had to save this as a PDF because in his email, he also sent a bunch of photos, so it wasn't going to really work well on this computer. So as you can see up here, his letter says, just to see his below current draft of the commentary. So this was sent in last month, when this initially was going to be in December. My name is William K. Loggston, owner of 5902 Old LaGrange Road, which is directly adjacent from the property for which Kristi Nash is seeking a waiver of county regulations. I am submitting my formal objection to this waiver for the record, as it would not only have a direct and detrimental impact on my property and the neighborhood generally, but would appear to be unjustified, unjustified in the view of the Planning Commission's own stated criteria for granting such waivers. Earlier this year, the Nash's DBA GNC Investments LLC purchased the property at 6,000 Old LaGrange Road in Crestwood, dated March 11th, 2024. We share an 816-foot-long property line. On November 21st, I received a notification from the Oldham County Planning and Development Services that Mrs. Nash has requested a waiver of the 40-foot-wide access easement rule. The waiver would allow her to construct a 20-foot-wide driveway along our shared property line, providing access to the proposed developments on her back lot. The Oldham County Subdivision Regulations Article 4, Section 9.1 states that, in granting such waivers, the commission shall, or may attach the, and require whatever conditions it feels necessary to secure the basic objectives of the waived regulations. Also, in the commission's staff report, the section heading "Conformance with Zoning Ordinance Notes," the following statements are made. And so these are in the staff report, five, six, and seven. So according to the regulations, a proper access easement does need to be 40-foot wide. However, neither my neighbors, Steve and Kathy Reed, neither I nor my neighbors, Steve and Kathy Reed, are willing to make any accommodations too wide in the access easement strip or to provide any other means of access. It is therefore going to stay 20-foot wide, feet wide, with no other options regarding the objectives of the stated regulations. I hereby call this statement, when this parcel was created, into question. It is not known to me precisely how or when or by whom the flagpole easement strip portion of the parcel was created. And what he's referencing here, I think, is the application in the justification section, or what the easement width requirements were at the time. I have been unable to contact any land surveyors that were involved thus far. Aerial photos suggest that 6,000 Old LaGrange Road was built sometime before 1986. When I came along, the width of the flagpole strip was merely due to how far apart the adjoining property boundaries happened to be. Also, the intended use of the flagpole strip, as I understand it, was strictly a utility easement for accessing utility company facilities and infrastructure. This was evidenced by decades-long presence of such facilities belonging to LG&E, Louisville Water Company, AT&amp;T, and Spectrum Cable. It was never, to my knowledge, intended for any use by any kind of roadway providing motor vehicle access to subdivisions. Therefore, it is difficult to understand how the current owners of that easement strip can claim to be suffering an undue hardship because of its physical nature when they must have known about it when they bought that property. The waiver request appears to be founded largely on a matter of convenience rather than any necessity. Only one, only, one can only presume about any decisive explanation that there are good reasons to have such size of easement rules in place that should not lightly be dismissed. As for the commission's own stated need to secure the basic objectives of waived regulations, it is difficult to, to see how the proposed development meets that requirement in terms of offering any novel or otherwise. Additionally, there are significant practical issues related to fiscal constraints of the flagpole easement, including costs and complications of altering utility infrastructure. These issues may make the waiver unnecessary or unfeasible in the long run, further weakening the case for approval. In the past 19 years, we have enjoyed a peaceful and private living environment. The introduction of vehicular traffic along our shared property line, along with the proposed developments beside us, would drastically undermine this privacy. It would negatively affect the aesthetic value of our land, leading to visual cluttered noise and an overall degradation of the property's character. Furthermore, the introduction of motor vehicle traffic would endanger the safety of our family and property, particularly in regard to the terrain directly adjacent to our parking lot. The potential devaluation of our property is also a significant concern. Moreover, granting this waiver would set a troubling precedent for future real estate development in our neighborhood, undermining Oldham County's sense of rural character. Additionally, the Currys Fork watershed is, is a protected area with fragile ecosystems that could adversely, or be adversely impacted by increased development. Allowing such changes without clear long-term benefits for the community could have lasting negative consequences for both the environment and the quality of life for all residents. So he also submitted some photos. I don't know how many of these we want to go through, but there's this, and I don't know if you want to add any comments to these, and I can just flip through them. I don't know if you've seen these.
This is on Old LaGrange Road. This, this pole here is one that would have to be moved. The guy wires actually go directly across the opening of the property there. Same picture.
Yeah.
That's probably a better view of it to show where the guy wires are.
And then I think that's just...
Water, yeah, utilities. That's probably good.
And then your other...
Ms. Reed?
Yeah, she just...
If you want to show any of her photos or videos, it's basically the same kind of thing, and I don't know if Ms. Reed is here. Okay. Okay. Just want to make that available.
Any question, any other question?
Mr. Sawyer, we'll come to questions in a minute. Is that the end of your presentation?
It is, sir.
Okay, thank very much.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, everybody holding up all right? Okay, we'll move into questions from the commission. Who has questions? Mr. Douglas?
My first one will be to the county engineer first, and then I'll have questions for the applicant and property opposition. As far as you know, I don't see anything in the documents as for temporary easement if someone was going to build a 20-foot right-of-way, or 20-foot access easement road. Have you seen anything submitted from the applicant that they're going to acquire temporary easements from the property owners to build that road?
I, I don't know that a road is being proposed. I think a driveway is being proposed, and that's going to be a question for the applicant.
Okay.
But you, but no, I've not seen anything of an additional, other than the 20-foot access easement being proposed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Douglas, anything additional?
Oh, to him?
Right, please.
Okay, is it my understanding that you have to pave the road, or could it be gravel?
Well, again, what's, what's being requested, to my understanding, and I'd like the applicant to verify this, is a driveway.
Okay.
Private roads, if, if they were proposing a private road, that would require them meet those regulations, the width and the other geometry. However, private roads are typically intended, and if you read our subdivision regulations for subdivisions, to provide up to 20 lots. So here again, we think we're talking about a driveway to two properties, not a private road.
Okay, so if it's a private driveway, it could be gravel, and does that cause water issues, or?
Well, so typically, if it's gravel, gravel is considered a pervious surface, not impervious like asphalt. So it wouldn't be included in that stormwater concern typically.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Cross, anything additional? Mr. Douglas, did you have additional?
Yes, Mr. Talbot. So are we proposing a driveway or proposing a road?
No, we are not proposing a road, we're proposing a driveway. All of those points made by Mr. Sawyer about pavements, drainage issues, resulting in impervious, have nothing to do with this case or this application whatsoever.
Okay, what is the applicant prepared to do because of the utilities running through or in the middle of that easement, or proposed easement?
Could you all hear me on the last answer? Thank you.
I did.
That's much better. Yeah, on the utilities, the, the water companies, it's right in the middle, that would have to be moved. That's simply an expense of my clients. It's not a something that cannot be done. It's simply an expense. The guide wire also would just be an expense. It seemed evident to me, although we would have to check this, that, that that pole out front is in the right-of-way, and we could get that moved. And that's, it's, it's, you know, it costs some money, but it has nothing to do with the neighbors having control over it, has nothing to do with us being able to get access to the utilities at all. And I would just point out that all of the, all of the information they gave you about us not being able to get utilities, there was very little detail about that, and for a reason, is, is not accurate. The conclusion is simply wrong.
Where would the water service come from? Because there's a water meter, or not a water meter, but there's a water line there, accessibility. Is that for whose service?
Sure.
So that water...
Well, hang on.
I'm sorry.
Name an address for the record, please.
Glen Nash, 6,000 Old LaGrange Road, Kentucky 40014.
Thank you. You may proceed.
The water meter shown, or the water top shown...
Right.
Actually feeds my house in Old LaGrange, so it's not a neighbor's. We would grant those two properties, that, those two properties in, in, I'm sorry, I don't know the proper terminology for...
Well, that's a service line, I would assume. I don't want to assume, but I'm not...
Yeah, it's, it's, it's 6,000 Old LaGrange Road's water meter. We don't need to move it, I've talked to the water company. We would simply add two more meters there to feed this.
So you would, the meters would be in the driveway?
Louisville Water doesn't have a problem with it.
Right.
We'd move it if we needed to. If it was requested by any authority, we would gladly move it.
Now, the utilities for, apparently, the AT&amp;... Is that true? Or you're...
Go ahead, finish.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
That's all right. The appears to be AT&amp;T cabling, or I would say AT&amp;T fiber, it looks like to me there. It's in the middle of the roadway, too. Have you been in contact with them also?
I have not been in contact with AT&amp;T, no.
Because I'm not sure that plastic cover is going to be something they're going to ask for in the middle of a driveway.
That's not in the middle of the driveway.
Okay.
Pull the pictures back up. It is off to the side. All the utilities sit, except for the water, which runs down the middle. All of the other utilities sit on the property line.
Okay.
At 20 feet. The utility pulls, and I don't know where it goes underground. We can definitely do an 811 dig and find out where AT&amp;T is. My assumption is AT&amp;T comes across the line...
Okay.
Down and hits that box because 5902, they're from that line that goes underground to their house.
Okay.
So I think that's AT&amp;T's access to those lines before...
My most important question I have for you, and hopefully you can answer it. How are you going to meet the standards of 20 feet width on that private driveway, knowing that you only have 20 feet to deal with to begin with, without having temporary easements from your neighbors? I'm not sure you're going to gain access to that, are you? Or have you asked for it?
No. Go ahead.
The private road, if that is what we were requesting, would need 20 feet for pavement. A driveway does not.
So you're going to do less than 20?
So a driveway would be, would not be 20 feet. It would be less.
Okay. All right. I just, whatever.
My current driveway on the 60-foot easement that we have?
Please come closer to that mic, sir. Thank you.
My current driveway, the gravel is 10 feet.
Okay. That's all, that's what I'm trying to get on record here.
We plan on gravelling 10 feet of the 20-foot easement.
Okay.
Leaving right-of-way on our driveway.
You see how important it is for terminology?
I do.
I can see myself, when somebody says, we're using this 20-foot access easement.
Yep.
When you're, somebody is trying to say a road, and somebody's trying to say a driveway.
It is a driveway.
It's important.
Yeah, yeah. It is a driveway. It will be 10 feet of gravel, leaving five feet on either side for whatever utility easement is needed, from, to, to my homes.
So...
Does that make sense?
My next question is to staff. Why do we need a waiver for an access easement when he's just going to put in a driveway?
Because he, because they are creating a flag lot. The flag lot standard in our regulations requires 40 feet.
Was it a flag lot before?
It was. I don't know, but he's creating new flag lots.
For the two lots.
So in creating the new flag lots, and our subdivision regulations today requires an access easement width of 40 feet. I also want, while I've got the mic, I just want to elaborate on the process of a minor plat, because before our questions go off the rails on other agencies, so if this is approved today as a waiver, they still have to go through the minor plat process to create the lots. In that process, we send out an email to all agencies that have anything to do with the project. So we send it out to the fire department, that's going to provide a comment whether or not they can access. We send it out to GIS, which is going to comment about addressing. We send it out to the health department, that's going to talk about septic. We're going to send it out to AT&amp;T, who probably won't comment. We'll, we'll send it to Louisville Water, we'll send it to LG&E, that they can provide any comment necessary. It doesn't mean just because you all approved the waiver today that that minor plat would get approved. Somebody may say, no, we, we can't relocate our utilities, and because of those agency comments, it could potentially be denied. So before the questions start, you know, going down the road of, you know, what's the fire department say, access, they will get that opportunity to comment in, in due time. So I just wanted to elaborate on, on that minor plat process, that if, you know, this is approved today, they... today, they actually have already applied for that, because they did that first, and that's when we said, you need to come to the Commission with the waiver. So that would be sent out to agencies. They would have a week to comment, and then we would choose whether or not to approve or deny that minor plat based on those comments, so.
Ryan, thank you very much. And Commissioner Douglas, I mean, I just want to emphasize, your question is raised, really is what the seminal issue of what we're here for today. That flag pole was created 30 years ago. We could use it yesterday as a driveway for the current owner that lives there. By approving this waiver, all we are doing is going to allow two lots to use it as opposed to one. It really is that simple. And there's a lot of background story with the neighbors, which in closing I'll get into. But that is all we're talking about today. Thank you.
Thank you for the response.
Mr. Douglas, anything additional? Commissioners, other questions?
Mr. King.
Mr. Fauci. I'll get right back to you, Mr. Marsh.
Mr. Talbot?
Yes, sir.
When, do you know when they purchased it? Does the deed say it's a flag lot, or does it say it's an access easement on the deed?
I don't know. I mean, the access easement for right-of-way, that's part of your old's current regulations, and that's the terminology that they use. I have never seen, at least that I know, not to say they don't exist, but you create a flag pole, and it actually says it's a flag pole. I think that's more of a term of art to describe them. So I doubt it would say anything such as that. But it is their property, and as Ms. Barge testified, they could use that today as their own driveway. There is no prohibition on that whatsoever. And all we're going to be doing, and again, is to use it for two lots. That's it. Since we're coming forward with, we're going to try to subdivide that, you know, the current regulations are being applied by staff to us, and the current regulation says, anytime you subdivide for a subdivision, you've got to have right-of-way of 40 feet. You'll have the ability to waive that condition if we meet the standards. Again, I think we do. I mean, the basic objective standards of what that is for simply don't apply to us, or they're satisfied. It's as simple as that. And I disagree with my counterpart, Mr. Sawyers, about undue hardship. The flag pole was created, that's man-made. The creek that would require the bridge is topographic, and that's not man-made. Both of those apply. Only one of them is really necessary to grant it under exceptional hardship, 9.1A. And we think we comply under 9.1A and B. Again, 9.1B was the first one I pointed out. I think that's the best. We meet the basic objectives of what the purpose of the regulation is for. There's only two lots, as Mr. Siliman mentioned. To have additional standards, you're thinking of 20 lots, which you will see on large subdivisions. You could have 200 lots, and there you might need 40 feet. For two lots, you simply don't need it. This is an appropriate case for the waiver, authority of your old's to be utilized, and we would hope you would, so that the Nash's children can move in there with them and their grandchildren.
I've got a few more questions.
Okay.
Who, the fence, whose property line is that on right now?
That is, it's the Reed's property, the Reed's, which is the neighbor that Mr. Sawyers, one of his clients, they own the property on both sides. So the fence, I haven't surveyed it. I assume that was built by either the Reed's or the prior owner. I think probably a prior owner, but he could testify about that.
So would that fence have to come down?
No, it would not be touched.
Okay. Going back to the way Mr. Nash accessed his property right now is through the 50-foot easement that's there. These lots could be also added to that, but you'd have, you're saying, there's a creek. Can you show me where that creek was, by the way? I didn't, I don't have a topo on my stuff.
Anna, can you pull up, I don't know if you have a better picture.
And is it a wet line stream? Is it a?
It's a blue line stream.
Blue line stream, I'm sorry.
I don't know if the applicant wants to point out with the mouse on here.
Are we able to zoom in?
I don't know that we can do that on this. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, but I. Where do you think it is then?
We don't have access to internet on this computer, so I don't know if that helps, but either way.
I can draw it up if it will help you.
No, if someone just kind of roughly points to it.
Thank you, Mr. Siliman.
Mr. Chairman, can we get a definition of the blue line stream while we're waiting?
Sure, Mr. Siliman, since you're at the mic.
I might have a slide of that also.
Thank you.
So here are the contours, and you can see the contours indicate a stream going through here. Would you agree, John?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Okay. So here, here's where it's indicated. A blue line stream is simply on the USGS mapping, which it doesn't indicate that it's necessarily a jurisdictional water of the Army Corps of Engineers, but it's a, it's a good tool to start identifying those. And again, on the USGS mapping, like here, it's shown as a blue line stream. It's simply a blue line indicated on the map. They're typically more defined, and what we would do in further investigation, if this were a large development that could potentially impact that, we would coordinate with the Army Corps of Engineers to determine if it was. They do, it's called a jurisdictional determination, to determine if they say it is. But again, it's a, it's a good indicator on this mapping.
Good, hang on, hang on, I've still got Mr. Fauci with the.
Yeah. So the bridge would have to be put, if you utilize a 50-foot, on Mr. Nash's property. That's where the bridge would go, not on the easement coming into his driveway.
Yes, that's exactly correct.
And you're saying that cost was more than doing a 800-foot drive gravel down the other way?
Mr. Nash, that's a fair question. I haven't priced it. Mr. Nash, can you testify to that? But bridges usually are not cheap. They're usually very expensive.
At that point, I would have to start dealing with the Army Corps of Engineers to make sure that it is appropriately done over the blue line stream. So we're talking about $2,000, $3,000 of gravel, or probably a $15,000 bridge.
You'd have a lot of grading on that driveway you have.
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Siliman, this, even though it's a blue line stream, you said it's not subject to a federal authority at this time, right?
It may be.
It might be.
That requirement would be addressed, as he said.
I know he said, yeah.
If you were to put in a culvert, it would be addressed at that time.
Yeah, so, and we're saying bridge, but it could be just a culvert that you put in, right?
It could be, depending, you're right. A bridge is defined as 20 feet or greater in span.
Right.
So if it's less than 20, it's not a bridge.
Okay.
By definition.
All right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If I could just follow up on that briefly, there is water in that creek all the time. And usually, from what I see in doing lots of developments, they usually go up in category, not down. So for instance, you usually would have an ephemeral stream that is marked with, what Mr. Siliman just showed you is ephemeral. We go out and get some geological surveying done. It comes back, they say, no, it's intermittent. Or it's designated as intermittent. We go do our survey, and it gets bumped up as a blue line stream. They usually, in my practice, I've never once seen it go the other direction. So them finding this as a blue line stream with water in it all the time is probably exactly what is going on and what will continue to be. If anything, you'll likely have more water, not less, in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Talbot. Mr. Fauci, anything additional? All right, Mr. Marsh, I had you next.
I believe Mr. Talbot addressed this, but as I look at the drawing we have up here, I see the yellow lines outlining the 20-foot piece of property.
Yes.
We've referred to that as deeded land, and it's been referred to as easement many times. And for definition, maybe staff can help with this. On the other side, there's a 50-foot easement, and as I understand that, that's owned by the property owners. So therefore, those yellow lines say that property is owned by the Nash's 20 feet. That is deeded property, does not easement of utilities in any way, shape, or form, and is just owned by the Nash's. Is that correct?
Well, I think the, yes, it is definitely owned by the Nash's, and they can definitely use it. There currently is a water line running down that property, and the water line, the water company is fine if we added these two lots, no issues. And there's also electrical poles, which one of my slides showed, I went through it fairly quickly, but there's electrical poles that go down that easement, and they're basically, they're on both sides of it. They actually cross. So the only thing I disagree with or wanted to elaborate on is that there are utilities that are using that, but the utilities would not be impeded in any way by us using this as a two-lot driveway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything additional, Mr. Marsh? Ms. Kraus, I had you next.
Okay, so one question is about utility poles. Will there need to be additional poles to support these two homes?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
So there's no other poles that have to go down that line? And then, as far as this stream, this creek, this waterway, how big is it?
Mr. Nash, I haven't been on the property. Mr. Nash, can you testify to that?
It ranges anywhere from two feet to six feet, depending on where you are. And the proposed lots are 100 feet from each stream, so to give it room.
All right, further questions from the Commission? Ms. Davis?
But in the beginning, didn't you say that you couldn't add any more properties to the easement where he comes in now?
That's right.
So you'd have to come back and?
With a waiver, and I think we would also have to get agreement from the other property owners that are using that easement. So I haven't fully, honestly, I haven't fully investigated that, but I believe there's already an agreement and understanding of what that is, so we would have to get permission from them. And even if we ask for the waiver, they could certainly object, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis, is that all you have? Commissioners, further questions? I have one. This may be for staff. Hypothetical. If this application involved only one minor plat lot attached and accessed by this flag, how would it impact this application?
I think if we just had one lot, I think we would have, Ryan, you may have a different opinion, but I believe that the same issue for a waiver would be required. Again, and it does get confusing on driveway, access easement, the right-of-way. The utilities use that, the flag pole and the ability of my clients to use it as a driveway exists today, but the fact that we're coming forward with what will be a minor plat means that your old's staff has applied the current regulations for that to us, and the current regulation says, point-blank, 40-foot right-of-way. That's what it says. So that's being applied to us. I think we've got vested rights that circumvent that, but again, we're here for the waiver today, and so we're being asked for the waiver, asking for a waiver from that requirement.
Mr. Douglas, do you have a question?
Yeah, maybe Mr. Talbot can answer it, nor the staff. If they use the existing driveway that the Nash's use on the 60-foot passway and access the driveways to, from his driveway, to the two new lots that are tracks that are being proposed, what waiver would you need, or what agreement would you need from the rest of the homeowners?
I believe it's that we would exceed the number of lots that can use that.
Lots from that.
Whatever that was approved for, we exceed that number. And so we would have to ask for a waiver from that.
That's correct. Right now, there's already three lots that are taking access off of that easement. So the addition of any additional lots without creating a private road, and I believe they had had conversations with the homeowner in the back, and there wasn't interest in wanting to do a private road, they would be unable to take access off of that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Douglas, you good? Ms. Kraus, did you have something?
I did. If I remember correctly, the recent purchase was in March of '24. When that property went up for sale, did the neighbors on either side know about it to have ability to purchase that? I don't know who.
Did they know about the, did they know about the flag pole, or did they know that the property was up for sale?
Yeah, that the flag pole was up for sale for them to purchase.
Yeah, it was listed on the MLS, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
All right, further questions, Commissioners? All right, everybody holding up all right? Need a break? You good? Okay, we're going to keep pushing forward. Thank you, Mr. Talbot. That ends the questioning of the Commission, and we'll move into rebuttal from applicant. Mr. Talbot?
The rebuttal, there was lots of comments about drainage issues, safety, utilities, that we violate the goals of zoning, which I think they meant the goals of the regulations. Simply none of that was accurate. The drainage, all of his comments, Mr. Sawyer's comments, were talking about if we created a 20-foot road with impervious surface. That's not the application, that's not what's being done, that's simply a misunderstanding of what we're here for today. The rock or gravel that would be placed, about 10 feet wide, would be pervious, and so you would not have those issues. One of the things I did want to point out is, to the extent that really this boils down to a neighbor not wanting that property that has a common boundary with them to be used. The flag pole has been there for 30 years. It's obvious what it is to be used for. It's not going to be extensively used. We're not asking for a public road. It's a driveway for two homes, which currently could be used as a driveway for one. All of the goals under the regulations, we meet, terms of utilities, future needs. Those are the two main things. We meet that easily. The comments about drainage additionally, there is no expert, I mean, if there really was any basis to it, that really requires expert testimony. None of that was forthcoming. But again, it's based on a misunderstanding. The safety, all of that would be addressed with the Fire and EMS when we actually come forward with our minor plat application, and they'll evaluate that. We do not believe there's any issues with that, but that will be evaluated. So that is not an issue that you need to worry about today. That will be judged and determined by the agencies that actually have control over that. One of the things that you'll remember in their pictures, they show their fence on the one side of the Reed's property. The other side of the Reed's property, they showed their driveway and cars on the other property that they own. Same owner, two pieces of property, they own both sides. They have had no problem with putting their own development right on the edge of the Nash's property. No hesitation at all. They want you all to take the stance that that 20-foot flag pole that was created 30 years ago by your old's commission, that it's their property, and it simply is not. There's been no consideration from the Reed's on the flag pole on the Nash's property. We're not here to say that we shouldn't consider that. We are. But a 10-foot gravel road, which is common in Oldham County, for two homes is not a significant or legitimate impact. So I'd ask you all to keep that in mind. I think that was the main things. I think there's just a lot of misunderstanding of what this is for. The background of this story is that the Reed's have wanted to buy this 20-foot property. They have made offers to purchase it. They also, on the house they live in, that's the one that was on the right side of the fence, the property that you saw with the driveway and the cars, they applied to have that as a temporary, what do you call it? An Airbnb, basically. I'm sorry, the word's escaping me. They had to come for a variance to get that, because they did not live on that property. The Nash's weren't terribly excited about it, but they did not object to it at all. And that's an imposition on them. So what's fair play in my mind, the Reed's have done a lot of things with the Nash's property, yet they asked you all to put a stop to the very minor thing to give them access to their property on a flag pole. The Reed's also, in order to not have to request the variance for that temporary rental housing, they asked to purchase the Nash's 20-foot property. That would combine their lots, and then they wouldn't have needed the variance, is my understanding. The Nash's didn't want to sell it, knowing what they wanted to do, so they had to come forward with their variance. They have made it clear in text to Mr. Nash that they want to buy the property in addition to the six acres back behind their property, which is effectively everything on the other side of the stream to be used for their property. Now, if they bought that property, what would they use that for? Now, if they bought that property, what would they use that for? In all probability, they would use the 20-foot access to get to that property, and they would either request the waiver like we are today, or because then they owned all the property, they could grant the 40-foot. And the Nash's asked if they could get extra 20 feet from them, they said no, so we're here for that today. This comes down to the Reed's trying to use you all to leverage themselves on property that they want to purchase and have not been able to purchase. That's not the purpose of what you all are here for today. You all are here to analyze whether regulations are appropriate, whether the basic objectives of those regulations are complied with, and we think they are. So in my rebuttal, that's the things that we want to say, and look forward to any questions, if you'll have any additional questions about that and those negotiations, Mr. Nash is happy to come talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Talbot. Mr. Sawyer, rebuttal from opposition?
Would you mind just wearing my phone in as well, please?
Counsel, can we take new input at this moment?
We're in rebuttal.
We are in rebuttal, so if we keep it to that extent, okay? Let's go ahead and get you sworn.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Kathleen Shadburn, 5900 Olagrange Road, Crestwood. So I wanted to correct, is it Mr. Talbot?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, correct you on a few things. So we own 5906 and 5900. So our properties are the two that have the concrete building and the fence in between. Mr. Logston owns 5902, which has the cars in the parking lot. So our property that we have turned into an Airbnb does not touch Mr. Nash's property. The reason we wanted to purchase the 20-foot was because it runs between our two properties, and we have mowed and maintained it for 10 years. We've done nothing on it. Couple of other things I wanted to clarify, term keeps getting used that they could use it as a driveway right now if they wanted to. Well, obviously not, because that's why we're here. There is exactly 20 feet. We own both sides, and we have lived there for 10 years, and as Mr. Logston stated, we have all been under the impression, now, no, I did not do research, but that has always been a utility access. And again, I think Mr. Talbot did a great job of showing you that one slide where all the utilities are right there on that 20-foot piece. You've got the water at the beginning, and then you've got the different poles throughout, and there is one pole that crosses over into our property. The pole at the entrance to the driveway would have to be moved on to, it's not our property, but it would be dead center of the front of our property. The very front at Olagrange Road is a public, if Ryan helps me with that, the public access, I guess you'd say, for the roadway, for Oldham County. But that pole would be moved right in the center of our front property, the main one out front. And as far as the water, I mean, if it's moved, and it's not under a driveway, it would have to be moved on one of our properties, which we're not in agreement to. And as far as this driveway is concerned, the reason we brought up pavement is because, yes, that would be ideal if you're going to do it, because I'm not an expert, but I own two driveways in this area, and we deal with extreme erosion. I'm also a farmer, so I'm very aware of how erosion impacts the ground. The driveway that goes to 5902, we actually own that driveway, but we have an easement with 5902. That driveway, we have had to re-gravel multiple times, we've tried to put in drainage pipes. My husband has put in, on 5906, we have speed humps throughout our driveway to try to prevent erosion, and it still doesn't work. It is constant maintenance. And neither one of these two driveways have near the slope of the area that they are wanting to propose to put in a gravel driveway. So erosion is a big issue. Now, as far as, again, Mr. Talbot stating that we wanted to buy the six acres and develop it, I'm sorry, but that's wrong. We own a farm, and the back of 5906, if you can see the very back of our lot, that is where my sheep live, I raise sheep. The reason we wanted to purchase the six acres is because we didn't want anybody to develop it back there. We do know there is a stream back there. We actually have worked with the Thompsons at 5910 to protect the stream that has been referred to, that runs along the edge of our property, all the way down and back across Mr. Nash's property. We are not trying to expand, grow, we wanted to preserve. We offered to buy the 20 feet just because it attaches our two properties, that's it. Thought it would be easier. But again, it's always been a utility access, not a driveway. As for the emergency issues, so I wanted to clarify this, because right now, the addresses are in sequential order. 5900 has its own entry off of Olagrange Road. It does circle all the way around so that you can circle the house, but 5902, the mailbox is at the driveway for 5902.
Mr. Sawyer?
I'm sorry?
You guys are straying into new testimony now that this is rebuttal.
Okay, I'm clarifying the emergency issues that were brought up. Is that okay?
Okay.
Okay, and the addresses.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so 5900, 5902, and 5904, and evidently, this would be 5908. So the emergency services have been confused before, even though they are in sequential order, and what they're proposing, they would be out of sequential order. The other part, if you look at that driveway that they're proposing, that 90-degree turn, I don't know how they would turn, but that's the issue that was brought up with emergency And so I guess, I don't know if in closing, but you know, this is, it's a safety issue for us, I mean, it is an erosion issue for us, and yes, I mean, we bought these two properties, and the Logstons have owned their property. It's a country setting, it would impact the value of our properties. For us to have a driveway going between our two properties, I mean, we have children and grandchildren that live close by too.
Ma'am, Mr. Chairman, that's clearly beyond the scope of what was discussed by Mr. Talbot. I mean, I think we've strayed beyond rebuttal at this point into new testimony.
And that's, that's fine, I can be done, I just was trying to close my rebuttal, so, but those were some of the issues that were brought up that I wanted to address because they were wrong, so, thank you.
I'll be brief. There's been a lot of conversation about, you know, driveways, private roads, whatever you want to define it as, but there's no question that what's being proposed here today is taking this piece of property and taking it from one parcel with a 20-foot deeded flag pole to three. Now, if you look at section 5.7i, it says, "For the purpose of access," and we're clearly talking about access here, I think we would all agree with that, whether we're talking about a driveway, driveway, or a private road, says, "For the purpose of access, flag lots shall have a deeded strip of land referred to as a panhandle exceeding to a public street or private road." A proper access easement for a common driveway is encouraged and shall be indicated on the approved final plat. Then, if we go down to section 7.1c, all it identifies there are private roads, and that private road will be for, back to your question, I believe it's your question, Mr. Key, it'll be a private road from one to six lots. This road that is being proposed is over 800 feet, it'll go to two different proposed tracks. So I don't understand, I'm not clear whether we want to call it a driveway, or whether we wanted to call it a private road, the regulations that have been laid out for a flag lot should be followed. That's all I have.
Thank you. You may want to stay there. Next up is your final statement. Mr. Talbot, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Ms. Reed a couple of questions, if I could, on cross-examination.
Counsel?
Mr. Chairman, I guess it would need to be limited to the, to things that would be new testimony that were brought up during her statement that exceeded the scope of the rebuttal, because I think she had, according to the regulations, I mean, according to our rules, she had a right to stand up in rebuttal and rebut things that were said as a part of Mr. Talbot's rebuttal. I mean, we get into sort of going afield, I mean, if that's what his wants to do, I think you have the authority to grant him the right to do that in a limited way.
Mr. Talbot, limited scope. Mr. Sawyer, we'll come to you in a minute.
I just wanted to ask her to look at a text to recognize, and on the question of whether she testified that that land was going to be used for sheep, and I had said in my rebuttal that it was going to be used for her son, I just wanted her to read her text, that was it, or trying to, we had it, I moved off it somehow, some apologies.
We need to take a break. Break this, or?
I'm 61 years old and my bladder is like that's entirely up to you, Mr. Chairman. I think we can make it to the end of this one.
Okay.
But I have a 38-year-old bladder.
Thank you for your time, Ms. Reed.
Please come to the podium.
Hi, Ms. Reed, I'm John Talbot, thank you very much, and thank you for correcting me on Mr. Logston's driveway, not yours, I was simply referring to his, Mr. Sawyer's clients, but you had some text exchanges about purchasing the 20-foot flag pole that we're discussing with Mr. Nash, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, can you, do you recognize this text here from you on July 30th?
Yes.
Could you simply read that into the record for me, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good morning, I just wanted to get back with you regarding the land. We are definitely still interested in purchasing the 20-foot strip and the six acres directly behind us, but we do not want to swap 20 feet for 20 feet. We did receive our Airbnb permit, but we were not comfortable with the 20-for-20 swap at any time. After speaking with planning and zoning, I know there are still several hurdles for you regarding building the two houses, and I'm truly sorry you guys are dealing with all this. If at any time you decide you would want to sell the property and try to buy a house and land somewhere else where it would be easier to accomplish your goals, I know my son and his wife would be interested in the place. And so if you're asking me what place, that's his current home.
Okay.
Not to build anything.
Okay, thank you. It doesn't mention anything about sheep, though, you'd agree with that, correct?
Has nothing to do with sheep, my sheep are on the back of my property.
Okay, thank you.
I was pointing out where they were.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Reed.
Okay.
Mr. Talbot, shall I wrap up?
I'll be very brief. Mr. Sawyer has mentioned that we do not comply with the current regulations, we agree with that. We think the answer for that are pretty clear, that is why we've requested the waiver, and you will have the authority to grant those waiver on two conditions. One, exceptional hardship, which actually is referred to and defined as undue hardship for topographical man-made features, I've already expanded on that, we think we comply with that. More importantly, the second part, 9.1b, the basic objectives of the regulations are met. 40-foot right-of-ways are for a 200-lot subdivision, and they also apply to two-lot subdivisions. They are not always needed. If this two-lot subdivision had the possibility of being expanded in the future, or if there was land behind it that you all thought as planning commissioners, well, we might need that access, perhaps it would be relevant, but it is not. This property will only access those two small lots that we would be subdividing, in terms of utilities and future growth, we clearly meet the basic objectives of the standards, you all would be well within your power and authority in granting that, granting that waiver. There was some mention about maintenance agreement, just so there's no confusion about that, there were no questions, I don't think there were. We are agreeable to doing the maintenance agreement, we haven't really sorted all that out with staff, but we have absolutely no issues on that. If you all wanted to create a condition, that it's conditionally approved on us, meeting with staff to comply with what they require of us, we have no problem with that whatsoever. And they also said, there's been lots of comments multiple time from the opposition in this case, about that flag pole was only for utility access, utility access. You all have been in this position long enough, utilities do not require a flag pole, utilities are commonly granted on a simple easement, you do not need a flag pole. The only reason for a flag pole, and the only reason it was created 30 years ago, was for access to that other part of the property, and that is what we're here for today. The Reed's property, which you can see kind of center stage at 5906, that was part of that 1995 subdivision and consolidation. That land was on it. The reason that little strip was preserved was solely to give access to the other side, because on the side that the Nash's are on currently, that access easement was already at the maximum capacity, and the 20-foot met the standards back then. So with that, we think the grounds are their field to provide this, we hope you do. The Nash's and their children and their grandchildren are very much looking forward to having the ability to move there. We will still have to comply with all the other conditions when you go forward with the subdivision, the minor plat, those are not issues for today, and hopefully we can meet them, we think we can, but we do ask you to give us the waiver so we can take the next step to do so. Thank you very much for your all's time.
Thank you, Mr. Talbot. Mr. Sawyer?
First of all, thank you all for your time this morning. We've talked about a number of different issues. It all comes back to what the goal of the petitions are here, and again, it's to change the old plat, to add two more parcels, and to create a subdivision. Now, who's to say we're not standing here in 15 years when these families have decided to sell their properties to someone else, and that other person or that new owner is to come in and triside more parcels? We'll be right back here again, and we're going to be talking about the same thing, which is that 20-foot strip of property and whether it's big enough and whether it should be used as a driveway. If the owner, if he weren't seeking to subdivide this out, then yeah, he might be able to use this as a driveway, I mean, he would have to move all the utilities and so forth, but again, the regulations are here for a reason, not just to protect who is in front of you all today, but who might come before you all in 15, 20 years. Now, we've brought up a number of challenges. The narrow driveway width being a number one, we've shown drainage and erosion issues and how they will negatively affect client, my clients, property owners who are already there and are obeying, are abiding by and obeying the various regulations, potential safety and emergency response issues, utility issues, and relocations, and ultimately, just overall violation of what these zoning goals are, which we have referred to multiple times. Our request is to deny the variance, to ensure fair and equitable application of these regulations, without creating undue hardships to my clients, and deny the variance to bring long-term negative impacts on both them, the neighborhood, and the property in general. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer. All right. Mr. Fisher?
Is it my turn?
It's your turn.
All right, so you all have heard evidence and testimony from both the applicant and opposition in regards to this... regards to this waiver request of the 40-foot width that is required for a flag lot. So they are requesting to keep their existing 20-foot access to those two newly created flaglots that'll obviously be contingent upon the minor plat submission and approval at the staff level. So on page two of your staff report, you do have motions to both approve and deny. And as both the applicant and the opposition have stated, those are going to be based on the undue hardship side of things, as well as design innovations in this case. And you've heard evidence and testimony from both to prove their position. You also have motions in there to deny if you do choose to do that. The potential conditions of approval are on the next page, and I believe there was another one that she, that you had added on yours. That's in regards to the minor plat. So those conditions of approval are the waivers shall only apply to the plan review today at this January 28, 2025 Planning Commission public hearing, as well as the minor plat, as well as the shared maintenance agreement prepared and agreed upon by all parties affected and recorded with the minor plat. And I know Mr. Talbot referred to that in his closing statements, so I believe that frames it up for you.
All right, Commissioners, question. Mr. Douglas?
Yes. If staff or any applicant is, would look at this possibility of a binding element, the applicant has mentioned it several times, and I believe even the, Mr. Nash even mentioned it, would the applicant be agreeable to not exceed a 10-foot width common driveway on the 20-foot flagpole easement?
Mr. Talbot?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Okay. Anything else?
That would be added to the binding element?
Mm-hmm. All right. Other questions, Commissioners? Sure.
Just a clarification, Mr. Fisher. You mentioned the approval of the minor plat, and that goes with the utilities when they do that.
Correct. The utilities get sent that, and then the minor plat or the maintenance agreement would also be recorded with that minor plat. They would submit that at the same time.
Thanks for the clarification.
All right. Any additional questions? Seeing none, we'll move into motion making. The floor is open for a motion on the waiver.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Marsh? We can. All right. Maximum five minutes, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Who's that? High-tech. Okay. We'll return to order. Commissioners, the, the, the floor is open for motions with respect to this docket. We're looking for a motion on the waiver. Who would like to bring a motion? Ms. Nasser, is that you?
That is me. Regarding Docket PZ-24-022, make a motion to approve the waiver access easement of a width from 40 feet to 20 feet based on the testimony and evidence today of the unique nature-made or topographical stream within the lot access to the other current access, access easement that is currently in existence to utilize the driveway or flagpole as stated in, in the evidence today. Also, the design innovations that were presented today of the previous flagpole there provides access to the, this property that was established originally on this property. I would also like to include the three conditions of approval that have been stated by Mr. Fisher and Ms. Barge today.
Thank you, Ms. Nasser. Counsel?
You have an adequate motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Douglas, thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, we'll move into a roll call vote. Ms. Edgar?
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Ms. Nasser?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
No.
Mr. Faalvi?
Yes.
Ms. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. PZ-24-0, what is my number here? 22 has been passed on a vote, approved on a vote of nine to one. Hey, Ryan?
Yes. I'll get you some.
Well, they, uh...
I've got some on it.
I'd like a variation on that. All right. We good, guys? Move into the next docketed item. Ms. Edgar, you're up.
Docket PZ-25-001, application has been filed by OR Partners and Oldham-Lagrange Development Authority for an amended planned unit development district, master plan for Oldham Reserve, LaGrange. The portion of the master plan being amended is 62 acres and zone PUD.
All right. Mr. Fisher?
All right. Ryan Fisher, Director, Oldham County Planning. I've got the privilege of doing this case for a couple of reasons. One is so that our senior planner, Ms. Barge, doesn't get burnt out with all the cases. So I told her I would take one for her. So we're here seeking a change to the master plan for Oldham Reserve, and this is a case that might look familiar to you all. Back in March of '23, we heard a case for these exact same residential high-density apartments that we're looking at. So the applicants here are requesting a couple of different amendments to their, their master plan. The first one being a change in the location of the residential high-density within the Oldham Reserve master plan report and the master plan land use map. The second amendment includes a change in right-of-way widths on East Peak Road to 90 feet. That's consistent with some of the other roads in the area. So we'll touch on both of these as we, we go forward. So the area that we're looking at here is our Oldham Reserve multi-use business park campus that is looking at it from the area of I-71, Ernie Harris Parkway over to, to 53, all in that general area near, near Rawlings, noted by the big green star. So the 36-acre parcel we're looking at, located near Eden Parkway and Peak Road intersection is within the overall 988-acre Oldham Reserve campus. That is a PUD. It has a lengthy site history with the Planning Commission. I did put all of these in your staff report. I took out a lot of these slides that were, that were done from the '23 case, just because they don't have a lot of relevance. I did keep a few of them in here. So if we look back to April of 2005, that's when the zoning map amendment and master plan came through with those binding elements that changed the zoning to the PUD that we have today. In February of 2006, we saw a development plan for the Rawlings campus. And then as well in September of '06, a minor amendment that addressed some parking standards. In January of 2015, addressed an expansion of the Rawlings Group office campus. And then in May of 2020, there was a development plan approval and the creation of 16 land parcels. In December of 2020, there was a site plan that was approved that addressed the establishment of Trilogy's Senior Healthcare Campus located on Peak Road. And then most recently, in March of 2023, you all heard a major amendment to the PUD master plan and that master plan report with binding elements that included that residential high-density district that we're going to be looking at today. That motion did pass on, on a vote of 11 to zero. So what we're really looking at today is the residential high-density district, which is the, the map that I have before you right now and also was included with your staff packet, put that residential high-density district over in here in the area of where the Rawlings Group is located. So as Oldham Reserve starts to develop, and especially with the I-71 corridor changes and the opening of the exit ramps there at Ernie Harris Parkway, you start to see a lot of movement on that campus. And as so, I kind of relate it to doing a puzzle, but you don't really know where the pieces go yet. So as, as people come in and express interest, it's kind of these moving puzzle pieces. And so back in 2023, the thought was the residential high-density, those apartments that we're, that we're looking at are, are going to be in this general location. And essentially, what we're looking at today is, is moving that to a, to another location. So a little bit about Oldham Reserve. It's a planned commercial and residential mixed-use business park and development located in almost 1,000 acres campus there in LaGrange, offers convenient access both to I-71, those new Ernie Harris Parkway ramps, as well as LaGrange via Kentucky 50. new Ernie Harris Parkway ramps, as well as LaGrange via Kentucky 53 as well. It incorporates various different land uses, and in their master plan, you see these in that land use chart, which are on the documents that have been provided to you. And these include office, commercial, mixed-use, neighborhood, center, single-family, low-density, single-family specialty, residential high-density, which is the subject of today, as well as a residential medium-density. The residential high-density district allows development from medium-to-high-density residential multifamily communities, and that overall density is up to 24 units per acre are permitted in those cases. And there's really no changes to that, you know, what we're looking at today. They still are going to do the 24 units per acre that was approved in that March '23 docket, and they're going to be requesting approval of up to 624 units to be constructed on those 36 acres. That'll be consistent with Oldham County Board of Education's school capacity standards as they go forth. So what they're really looking at is taking where the single-family or the high-density residential was approved in March of '23 and moving that to a new location. And you'll see that here in a second. So they are looking at moving it from what was generally in this area and moving it over next to the Rawlings Group. And their counsel, as well as our partners with Hollenback Oakley, can talk to you about the reasoning behind that and then what they will be doing with the part that was the residential high-density will be taking that back to office commercial. And they can explain a lot of the reasons there behind that. The other part of this master plan amendment is to look at these right-of-way widths, and I know Jim Solomon can probably allude a little bit more to these, but looking at changing those right-ofways to be 90 feet, which is consistent with some of the other platted roadways in that general area. And once again, I'll let them allude to what the reasonings are behind that. So in summary, the applicants are requesting to amend the Planning Commission's previously approved Oldham Reserve master plan and changes to that master plan report and master plan land use map to move that residential high-density district, as well as looking at a change to change those right-of-way widths on the roadways within that area. Potential binding elements for this case, there'll be no significant changes to the Oldham Reserve master plan report and land use map as presented at the January 28, 2025 Planning Commission, without coming back before you all. At this time, we still have each individual site plan coming before you all as well. And the development and site plans must comply with all established federal, state, and county ordinances and requirements at the time of approval. That concludes my presentation. I know the partners with the applicant will be able to bring forth a lot more information about the particulars on this, but I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Any additional input from staff?
Just real briefly, as Mr. Fisher referenced, a chart with the right-of-way widths. I put that together in communicating with the development partner just to detail the request to reduce some of the right-of-way to 90 feet, because if you look at Eden Parkway as it was built, and that's kind of the north-south connector that's built through there, two lanes in each direction, a center turn, or I'm sorry, a center median with sidewalks and curb and gutter, so it's a pretty significant typical section, and that fits within the 90 feet that was platted for that. So given that, if you look at this chart, I don't see any reason why some of those other roads couldn't be reduced to a 90-foot right-of-way and be sufficient also.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Anything additional from staff? All right, commissioners, questions for staff? Mr. Douglas?
I have a simple one, Ryan. I think it's simple, I hope. So basically, we have two justifications for the amendment for the PUD. Correct? One is for the right-of-way, and then the other is to convert, move 136-acre track to another 26-acre track, just switching the area.
Right.
Simple?
Like I said, it's trying to fit together a puzzle right now with not knowing really what the pieces and what the players are, so trying to make this puzzle look nice. And at the end of the day, that Oldham Reserve will be a park that everybody can be proud of. So in order to do that, sometimes you've got to pull some switcheroo's.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Kraus.
Just a quick question. On the 90 feet, previously, it said one lane each direction with center turn lane, future sidewalks on both sides. Does 90 feet allow for sidewalks still? Or... Okay, thanks.
For the record, yes, it does.
All right. Additional questions, commissioners? Mr. Finney.
Yes, Ms. Solomon. Excuse me. Does the total number of acres in this tract change in this adjusting from one spot to the other?
I'll let them address that when they come up. They'll be able to answer that question far better.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Further questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll move into presentation from applicant.
Hi, good morning, everyone. My name is David Bazanas. I'm President of Oldham Chamber in Economic Development.
Let's get your team sworn, Mr. Bazanas, okay? Everybody who's going to provide testimony.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And name and address from everybody as you begin to speak first time, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is David Bazanas. I'm the President of Oldham Chamber in Economic Development, and one of our roles is also to serve as the staff for the Oldham LaGrange Development Authority. And so we're here to ask for this request, the change to the master plan. This came with a unanimous vote from the ODA board and happy to answer questions. We're excited about the timing of where we are with this project due to a lot of marketing efforts and collaboration between our office and the development partners and the brokerage community, as well as a significant amount of investment in infrastructure in and around the park. We're excited to have a project pipeline that is taking shape, and there's a lot of negotiation for land going on, which denotes the need for this type of consideration. So happy to be here to answer any questions. Thank you.
We'll come to questions. Gentlemen, do you have anything to add?
Say, Jeff Adamson, good morning. I'm Board Counsel for the Oldham LaGrange Development Authority. I'm not sure if you need my address for the record.
Yes.
Adamson Law, 105 South First Avenue, LaGrange, Kentucky, 40031. So I have with me, of course, Mr. Bazanas, who's already introduced himself.
Can I get you to get a little bit closer to that mic so we pick it up on record?
And Mr. Oakley, Greg Oakley, on behalf of our private development partner. Might be best if Mr. Oakley addressed the justifications for each request, the two requests that we've made today, and then questions can follow that. And we're all three going to be available to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Oakley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, my name is Greg Oakley. I address this 12451 Plant Side Drive, Louisville, Kentucky. I'm a partner in Hollenback Oakley. Hollenback Oakley is a managing partner of OR Partners. It's a joint venture of a couple of our companies. So we have the master development agreement with ODA, and we've been working very closely with the board for 10 years. And what's changed in the last two years since we were back last before the commission, a couple of things. We've been working on the infrastructure for a number of years. Everybody knows about the widening of 71. Everybody knows about the opening of the interchange, which was just last July. And we've been targeting that infrastructure to provide access. Ernie Harris has been completed for three years, but it was still hard to show the property, hard to get to the property. So that interchange has had a huge change on impact on interest in the property. Also, too, we've been working for four or five years to clear up and tighten up some federal impacts on streams. And on the earlier case, you heard a little bit about that. That's been five years of work with Corv Engineering, State Division of Water. So now we have clarification on our federal permits. We have access to the property. The other big change in the last couple of years is there were some moratoriums on sewers. We've been working with LaGrange Utilities, City of the County, the board to provide more infrastructure to the park. That is under construction now, so we have sewers, we have access, and we have clarification on the environmental impacts. With all that in hand, in the last six months, we've got three contracts in hand, another one we received Friday, that the board is reviewing now. And it's, as Ryan said, it's a mixed-use development. It's live, work, and play. It's commercial, it's office, it's medical, it's residential, and all those things. We're seeing all those coming to play right now. We have a medical facility under contract. We have an 18-acre commercial development to bring new retail to the county. We have a multifamily group that we just signed a contract with Friday, which is, the board just signed a contract Friday, which is contingent on getting this rezoning. When we came before the commission two years ago, we had to pick a site based on our market analysis that had infrastructure and access, which was the initial site, right where the OC is shown, right? Right there. That's where we had the original high-density residential. We had sewers, we had better access there. With the opening of the interstate interchange and the sewer issues getting resolved, now the interest is over here. So we want to take that density here and apply it over here. It was on 26 acres here. It'll be 37 acres over here. So that is better suited for retail, I mean, for a high-density residential. And now we'll open this up for a high-visibility commercial. We were talking to a big box or two to possibly go there. It has visibility from the interstate, the retailers like that. This is more wooded, hilly. The multifamily group likes that better. So the justification is, in the two years, we've got all this infrastructure, all these entitlements in hand, and we've seen, as we thought we would, tremendous interest in Oldham Reserve. That's the first request, and that's the justification for that. And the best justification is, we've got a contract now to build multifamily over here in the relocation. The second waiver request is for reduction of the right-of-way of East Peak to 90 feet, but it'd be consistent. You can look and see this is pretty accurate, the pictorial of the width of Eden Parkway. It's four lanes, median divided, drainage, sidewalks, all in the right-of-way. As you can see, this is a much, much smaller road over here. So we just want to take that back to 90 feet. The original master plan, which was prepared, you know, 20 years ago, they were throwing darts. And as Ryan said, this is an evolving, this is our fifth business park. What you start out with is, has to evolve as you're going through the development. So we want, the second request is to make this section a peak road, which we will now build 90 feet. And if we do the 90 feet, not only will it be consistent with the other roads, it'll also allow us, we're under a contract now with Trilogy, to expand their operation, put in 26 chalets here. That 10 feet doesn't sound like much. 10 feet is the difference between Trilogy being able to build their units or not being able to build the units. So both of these projects, Trilogy and the multifamily, are contingent on the rezoning and on the reduction of the right-of-way from 100 to 90 feet.
Thanks, sir. Anything additional from applicant?
Just available for any additional questions.
Got you. Is anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Name and address for record, please.
John Black, Mayor of LaGrange, home address 108 North Fifth Street, LaGrange, Kentucky. First of all, I'd just like...
Let's get you sworn, sir.
Excuse me?
Let's get you sworn.
Yes, sir.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I sure do. First of all, before I begin, I just want to say thanks to this awesome Planning Commission. You know, that previous hearing, that was a well-thought-out presentation by both sides, but I just want to tell you all, as a planning body, I was watching the intent and the intensity as you all were listening to that application, and I just want to thank each of you for that. And I think we've got a really good planning unit here in Oldham County. And once again, I just want to thank each of you all for your service and what you do, because I know you don't have easy jobs in trying to decide these issues when you've got good folks coming from both sides. But I want to thank you for that. I stand here today as Mayor of LaGrange and also as a point and authority to three members to the ODA board. I'm here today to support this amendment to the master plan. I know I was here a year or two ago suggesting I'd like to change it over to the front quadrant, but as everyone said, this whole park is a moving puzzle, and we're determined to build this park out and get things going, which I think Greg has alluded to that. We have a lot of things happening that really can't be disclosed yet, but for those who wonder why we're going with apartments at this time, that is not the intent of the property, but listening to our development partners, there is such a need for those type of apartments, whether it's for the Rawlings folks or the people who are trying to track to the park, but we'd love to have some good, high-end living there residentially. But this is to be a work-play type of park where you live there. So I just want everyone to know that myself and certainly the county position on it is, we're looking for high-paying, sustainable jobs in the park in addition to the residential component. So just because we're here today trying to help amend the plan for these apartments does not mean that we're not giving up on bringing good, high-quality jobs and companies to this business park. And I think through our development partners, we will do that. But I'm here today to support their application because OR Partners, they're a good company, a good partner, and we try to go with what they're suggesting. So thank you all for your consideration today. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the application?
Good morning, everyone. I'm David Vogel, Oldham County Judge/Executive. I live at 400 North Fifth Street in LaGrange.
Give us a second. Get sworn in, please.
I did stand earlier, but I'm happy to be sworn in again.
If you're sworn, you're sworn. Let's go right ahead.
So help me God. That's a part I add at fiscal court meetings. But anyway, I want to support everything that's been said here. I don't want to reiterate all the positive things about Oldham Reserve, like the mayor, three people. I appoint three others to the board, and we have six people on our Oldham LaGrange Development Authority Board. We have, I've forgotten how many meetings we're into. I think it's, I want to say 170 meetings. At the beginning of each meeting, it's announced how many meetings we've had. So we're getting up there to a lot of meetings. But we've turned the corner with the off-ramps. There's a lot of, as Greg mentioned, a lot of interest in the park now. And so we're really happy to see the progress and the sun rising on our park. People are interested. People want to come here. We support. I've been to virtually every meeting for the last 14 years, and we support the change requested here today. We wanted jobs in this park. We still want jobs in this park, and we're going to get good-paying jobs in this park. But the development of the park depends in part on residential and commercial development as well. We're happy to have the Springs nursing care and long-term care facility. Condos are coming. LaGrange has built out the golf course with a brand-new eating facility, and that course is really coming on. And it's beautiful to have it right next door to this. It offers other contingencies. There are some potentials for some really big property taxpayers that are on the horizon. We haven't snagged them yet, but we're interested in getting them here. And when that comes, it'll affect every one of our billfolds in this community. All of us will pay less tax if we get what we're hoping to get. We haven't had a county property tax increase in 15 years. I hope to keep it that way for the remainder of my time and for those who follow me in this job. We all want a good, successful community and have what we need and what we want with less out of our own pockets and more out of the business, the community. And we've got some great opportunities out there, and we'd love to share them here this morning. Just, we've got to get them on the dotted line first. But there are people coming here you don't know about who are interested in landing in our county here. So we support this very much and I hope that you will agree to it as well. Thank you all.
Thank you, Judge. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the application? All right, seeing none, we'll move into those questioning or opposing the application. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition or have questions of the applicant? Seeing none, we'll dispense with them. Seeing none, we'll dispense with rebuttal and final. Does applicant have a final statement for us today? Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry, we went too fast, right? All right, questions from the commission? Guys have questions? Ms. Kraus.
So access to this will be off of Peak Road as well as Eden Parkway or just Peak Road?
There'll be two access points on Peak. The property does extend, the overall zoning does extend to Eden Parkway. That'll be detention and some infrastructure. So there, there is no, and we've seen the preliminary plan, and the commissioners will see the permanent plan, but no connection is anticipated on Eden Parkway.
Additional questions, commissioners? Mr. Falvey. Mr. Finney, I'll get you next.
Commissioner, good to see you. Signed to Friday. For a portion of the, of the 36 acres.
Oh, portion of it.
A portion of, yeah. Yeah, we're working with multiple, multiple concepts here.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Finney?
Mr. Ogley. It seems when this came before us before and we approved this high-density housing, there was a contractor then who was ready to start developing.
We, we had an LOI. We did not have a signed contract.
Okay, all right. Well, just, now just, my, my question was, there, no building had already started on the, on the property that was-
No, sir.
Originally.
We have not brought forward, we had not brought a, forward a plan for the original 26 acres.
Okay. Additional questions, commissioners? All right, seeing none, then we will move into final statement from applicant.
I don't think we need to say anything further.
All right, thank you much. All right, Mr. Fisher.
Sorry, takes me a while to get here now. Okay, so you've heard evidence and testimony on page three and four in your staff packet. You will see suggested motions to both approve and deny. This changed to their master plan, as well as the potential binding elements that are listed there on page four as well, which shall include, there, there shall be no significant changes to the Oldham Reserve master plan report and land use map as presented at the January 28th, 2025 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing without review and approval of the commission. Each individual site plan shall be reviewed by the Oldham County Planning Commission, and the development and site plans must comply with all established federal, state, and county ordinances and requirements at the time of approval.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fisher. Commissioners, questions? Discussion? Mr. Baxter, do you have something?
No, sir. I'm just waiting to approve a motion.
Fair enough. All right, commissioners, the floor is open. Mr. Baxter is waiting for your motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Marsh.
In regards to docket PZ-25-001, I move to approve the amended master plan because the proposal is essential and desirable to the community and does not conflict with any of the previously approved Oldham Reserve planned unit development master plan. The community does need this type of economic development, and has, this development has a lot of potential for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Mr. Baxter.
You have an adequate motion, but I think Mr. Douglas wants to add something.
Mr. Douglas, please.
I do, Mr. Chairman. If, if Marsh doesn't object, I would like to ask that the commissioners also put in that the application to amend is for the justification for a request for, two requests they made was land use map modification, and also request number two was the PUD master plan street right-of-way from 120 feet, right-of-way to 90 feet right-of-way. Those were the two requested that we need to put on the record.
Specifically stated.
Understood. I, I would like to add the, the elements as well, but Mr. Baxter, can we do those together? I was under the impression we'd do it individually.
I think you can do it all together.
Okay, then I accept that.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh, Mr. Douglas, Mr. Baxter. We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Mr. Douglas, thank you. Discussion? All right, we'll open the floor for a roll call vote. Ms. Edgar.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Ms. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar, and PZ-25-001 has been passed on a vote of 10 to 0. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, commissioners. Holding up? We're going to have to take a break for lunch sometime. Do you want it before or after this next docket item is the question for you now? How you holding up? After? Okay, let's take a quick break and get a little water, and then we'll start up on the next, okay? Order. Ms. Edgar, will you please read the next docket?
Docket PZ-25-002. Application has been filed by the Hearth Foundation for a preliminary subdivision plan for six lots and a waiver of Oldham County Subdivision Regulation Section 5.7E, Joint Access, Fourth Parcel on Access Easement for four of the lots. A road frontage variance has been requested for four of the lots. The property is located at 1201 East Highway 524. LaGrange is 198.2 acres, end-zoned AG-1 Agricultural District and CO-1 Conservation District.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And Ms. Barge, you will have staff's application, or staff's presentation?
Yes. Anna Barge, Senior Planner. One thing I wanted to go ahead and clarify is that it is actually the, where I have bolded the fifth parcel on the access easement, they're requesting four of their parcels to access, and there's a neighbor already accessing off of that access easement. So this is actually the fifth parcel. They'll have four parcels plus the existing one equals five total. So I just updated that after further investigation. So as stated in the docket information, it is AG1 and CO1 zoning, and the current land use is agricultural. The reason they're having to do a preliminary subdivision plan is they're trying to do six lots at once. They could not do minor plots based on previous minor plots. They would have to wait some time, approx, they're, you know, usually it's five years between minor plots. So they decided to go the preliminary subdivision plan route, and the total acreage of their property right now is 189.2 acres. So they initially started this process back in 2023 after they purchased the property from the Morgans with the pre-application meeting in November of 2023, along with the neighborhood meeting on November 20th in 2023, and the TRC hearing in December of 2023. They then changed the application quite a bit and all of the information, and so they had a new pre-application meeting in October of 2024 with the subsequent neighborhood meeting on October 22nd of 2024 and the TRC hearing on November 20th. The agenda was posted on the website on December 30th, and adjoining property owners' notices were mailed on January 10th, and it was posted in the Oldham era on January 16th. So just some site history, staff approved three minor plot applications for this parcel, and a consolidation plot was approved in 2017, all of that happening before the current applicant owned the property. So in 2007, docket number OC-07-004 was considered for a road frontage variance, and that variance was approved unanimously through the Board of Adjustments. So this is what the property currently looks like. Only tracks one and two are being considered in this plan. Track three is not being considered, and the applicant can clarify if I misspoke there. So I just wanted to bring this up first because some of the consolidation, what they're trying to, they're trying to consolidate and split, and so I just wanted to add some clarity with the before and after. So just note that our GIS map does not have those parcels split up, so you can kind of follow this fence line or tree line right through here, and this is what's not being considered. And then as you, I'm going to go back to kind of fluctuate between the two. As you can see, it's these two tracks which are not divided on our map. So as you can see, most of the zoning is CO1, most likely due to the topography and the stream running through. And then there's that AG1 zoning at the front towards Highway 524, or Covington Ridge Road, as some people call it. So this is the plan, so it's kind of hard to see on here, which is why you were provided a large plan in your packet. So this is parcel one. Parcel two is right here. Parcel three, right here. And then four goes from up here, over here, and then five and six. And as you can see, this is already deeded off. This is not included in the plan. And then they're accessing off of here for parcels one, two, and three, and four. And this is that neighbor that currently already accesses off of 524 right here. So for conformance with the comprehensive plan, the Oldham County Future Land Use Map predicts that the use of this tract will be conservation, which typically includes undeveloped land, low-density residential and agricultural parcels. So conformance with the zoning ordinance, the proposed plan appears to be in conformance with all zoning and subdivision regulations, with the exception of what they're asking for. So sections two, or 020-020, that's that AG1 section of our zoning ordinance, and then 030-020, that's our conservation zoning regulations of the zoning ordinance. And that- And that's where it has the variance request information. And then Section 5.7E of the subdivision regulations for the waiver request for the four parcels that want to access off of that access easement. So the proposed development is located in Zone X of the FEMA map, which is outside of the hundred-year floodplain, and that's notated, notated on the plan in front of you today. And also included the TRC comments in your packet, which I hope you've had a chance to review. So for the notes on this, I will get, I will discuss more details on each tract further in this presentation, but this is just the highlights right now. So the applicant is proposing a preliminary subdivision plan comprised of six lots on approximately one hundred ninety-eight point two acres. As you saw, the majority of it is zone CO one with the remaining zone AG one. Both of those require one minimum acre lot size, which they're doing significantly larger than that. The tracks one through four will access via the existing access easement along Highway five twenty-four. And I know the applicant has discussed with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet if an updated encroachment permit is needed, and they can speak more on that. They already had that conversation with KYTC. So this applicant and this project did not require a traffic assessment because they did not generate enough numbers. You know, a lot of our bigger subdivisions require traffic studies, but this was not a traditional one and did not have enough lots and traffic generation to deem a traffic assessment necessary by our regulations. So Section seven point three of the Oldham County Subdivision Regulations requires that a single family residential developments of one acre or larger with a minimum building setback of thirty feet from any property line have fire flow requirements of at least five hundred gallons per minute with a residential pressure of no less than twenty pounds per square inch. So those two sections, the AG one and the CO one, which is that zero two zero dash zero two zero and zero three zero dash zero two zero, state that the CO one and AG one zoning requires thirty feet of road frontage. So lots one, two, three are proposed to have no road frontage, as you can see by the plan, and Lot four is proposed to have one hundred feet of road frontage. The applicant is asking for two different variances, one for those three lots of three hundred feet, and then one for that Lot four of two hundred feet. So Section 5.7E of the Oldham County Subdivision Regulations states that no more than three parcels should share an access off of an easement. The applicant is requesting a waiver of that regulation for lots one through four. So this is my overview of the parcel usage that I mentioned earlier. So this is based on the information given to us by the applicant, which I'm sure they'll go to more detail on. So parcels one through three are planned use for private, single-family residential. Parcel four would be undeveloped until later time, which a return to planning commission may be necessary. And then for parcel five, they plan to sell that for conservation easement, which they'll be able to provide more details for. And then parcel six, they plan to sell to a neighbor to the north that already shares property lines with that parcel for agricultural usage. So this is just a rough Google Maps of the area. I'm sure they'll have more pictures. So for the variance request, applicant is requesting two road frontage variances. The first is for lots one through three for three hundred feet of road frontage. And then the second variance is for Lot four for two hundred feet of road frontage. So if you see that, like I said, three hundred feet of road frontage is required in that zoning. They're asking for zero feet of road frontage. And then the difference in road frontage width requested is three hundred feet. And then for Lot four, if you go back to the plan, which I'm just going to go back to it real quick. So Lot four has that one hundred feet of access, which is why they're, they don't need as many feet difference on the variance request. So potential conditions of approval. The approval applies only to the plan presented at today's January twenty-eighth, twenty-two five Oldham County Planning Commission hearing. For the waiver request, applicant is requesting a waiver of Section 5.7E of the Oldham County Subdivision Regulations for having more than three parcels taking access from any single street encroachment. So the approval applies only to today's plan, today on January twenty-eighth, twenty-two five, at the Oldham County Planning Commission public hearings, and then a shared road maintenance agreement shall be prepared and agreed upon by all parties and recorded with the record plat. And so that will be between all their parcels and the neighbor, the existing neighbor that uses that. So lastly is the preliminary subdivision plan request. The applicant is requesting approval for the preliminary subdivision plan as required by Article three of the Oldham County Subdivision Regulations for six lots across one hundred ninety-eight point two acres. And then for the, sorry, I thought Mr. Fisher was going to say something, so I paused, but do you want me to? Ryan, do you want me to continue with the binding elements, or do you have something first?
No, you can.
So the proposed binding elements is the same one for the last three, or the last two for the first one. And then for the second one, there should be no subdivision of any lot into greater number of lots without review of Oldham County Planning Commission. So if they want to divide these lots up further in the future, they will have to come back to this commission. Thirdly, lots one, two, three, and four should have a shared driveway. Fourth, the preliminary subdivision plan must comply with all established federal, state, county ordinances and requirements at time of construction plan approval. Fifth, the applicant shall follow the requirements set forth by the La Grange Fire Protection District on the selection of fire mitigation systems. Sixth, the applicant shall coordinate with the La Grange Fire Protection District on construction inspection during the installation of fire mitigation systems. So that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Barge. Anyone else from staff, please?
Utilize Anna's maps. There we go. So this is a little unusual compared to some of our other developments in the sense that unlike the hearing that you had first today, because of the number of lots here, even though we're only talking about three houses, because of the number of lots it's being subdivided into, it brings it into the need for us to address this with our county stormwater management ordinances, whether it's the construction site runoff ordinance for when construction is being done, if this is approved, or our post-construction runoff ordinance that states that the development should not cause the post-construction runoff to exceed the pre-construction. So again, a little bit, a little bit unusual because there's only three houses, but it does fall under those requirements. So if this is approved, we will require that they submit construction plans to my office for approval for the stormwater quality management and erosion control permit. Similarly, the, there is a mapped blue line stream on the property. If there is any impact to that stream, we would require that they coordinate appropriately with the Army Corps of Engineers and the Kentucky Division of Water to either indicate to us that no permits are needed or get permits as required. Anna also mentioned the use of the fifty-foot easement. If you, if you saw the, either the YouTube Technical Review Committee meeting or read the minutes, there was a question from the property owner here, Josh Reardon, why they couldn't get access from other locations, potentially the park access road. This road goes back to the Morgan Conservation Park operated by Oldham County. We had actually had discussions with the applicant early on. The agreement, there's a purchase agreement for that area that actually stated only certain parcels could have access from that road, and that's why these parcels cannot and would then utilize this existing fifty-foot access easement at the front of Mr. Reardon's property. And as Anna mentioned, any improvements to that access onto the state route, Covington Ridge Road, would require a permit from the, from KYTC. That's all.
All right. Is that the end of staff's presentation? All right. Commissioners, questions of staff? Mr. Marsh?
Mr. Chairman. Looking at this, I am wondering why this isn't a commercial or a business. Are these homes, we're referring to them as homes, but it seems like a temporary housing?
No, these are, and the applicant can go more into detail. So these three houses, as stated by the applicant in their application, will be used for the applicant and then his two adult children and their families, is what these three private, single-family residential homes will be used for.
I read something about here missionaries in temporary.
That was part of the public comment that was included in your packet. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, from their website.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, staff. Couple of questions. Was it ever discussed with the applicants about acquiring or access instead of the variance for road frontage for lots one, two, three, four, and five off of five twenty-four, or does the state not allow that?
So I believe the state would not give them an encroachment permit to have driveways off of different places on five twenty-four, and they can go into more detail on what KYTC told them.
I guess, I don't want to call it, I guess it's Lot six. It appears that they're acquiring or having three hundred feet of road frontage for Lot six. And you're saying the state told them that they can't have access three hundred feet for Lot five, or?
So the, the three hundred feet they're allowed, that's just so they won't need a road frontage variance for that lot. I believe the access for Lot six will be coming from, keep in mind, it's being sold to the neighbor to the north, so they will be coming from that north end coming south. They would have to, the, once the, that person buys that Lot six, then they would have to go through KYTC to see if they could even get approval for access. But in order for that lot to be created, they need to have either three hundred feet of road frontage for Lot six. That doesn't matter if you're going to be accessing the road there or not. You have to either have that or ask for variance. And so on some of these lots, they have that three hundred feet of road frontage, and some of them they don't. And so just because they're having three hundred feet of road frontage doesn't mean that they're going to have encroachment on that road. So I believe Lot six will be accessed from a neighboring piece of land because they're going to most likely, and I don't want to make assumptions, but they're most likely either going to keep the parcel separately, or they're going to do a consolidation plat, which would just be administrative review by our office, and then they can just, it's their two property lines. If they buy it, they can just drive across the property lines.
But you see, my point is, they made sure they had three hundred feet.
For that one.
For that one.
Right, right.
Okay. So I mean, I don't have any, do you have anything that says KYTC is not giving them access to three hundred feet?
So let me answer your question. I think the applicant can address this more. So their original submission that they came to, Ms. Barge talked about, this was heard at TRC previously, and they had looked at some individual lots, a little bit different of a design. But they had looked at taking access to the back lots off of a road that would go all the way in and come in access off the rear. KYTC did say that, you know, based on site distance and things like that, they would grant accesses, but they were going to have to be shared. That plan has now changed, so that's different. Now KYTC did say in those TRC comments about access off of five twenty-four. I think a lot of the reason, and the applicant and their counsel can touch on this, is the access off of five twenty-four, the reason why they wanted to, to not do that is to keep the front lot in a conservation easement so that it wouldn't be touched and developed and anything like that. But then also crossing that blue line stream in order to get to their single-family residential lots that they intend to build and not have to worry about crossing that and doing anything with the blue line stream. But they can talk about that a lot more in their justification as to why they're asking for the variances.
I can understand you're saying that, but the blue line stream, even on Lot four, crosses multiple segments.
I believe they're going to hug the stream and just stay north of it. But I, I'm not sure they can clarify more. Right, they'll, they'll clarify on that.
I mean, the county engineer can attest to that, but I see multiple intermediate streams running through Lot four. I don't know how you cross one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Are you saying to access parcel five? Or just for, okay, just for four? I just wanted to clarify to make sure it wasn't a misunderstanding. Yeah.
So I'm just trying to figure out why they decided Lot five and not have three hundred foot entrance to each one of those, and I didn't know if that was discussed with you guys on that. In other words?
Are you thinking that, are you referencing the streams as what's blue on the map? No, that's not the, that's not the streams.
No, I'm talking about the creek lines and everything else that's on there.
I'm just struggling to understand the question.
Well, I'm just trying to decide why they couldn't use the three hundred foot easements on Highway five twenty-four.
Yeah, and there's a difference between like how they, they, I don't know if they could design this differently where it's more like rectangular, straight down, but even if they did and they could, they could do the three hundred foot, they still would have to access off of one plate, all of one place.
I just think that's a question for them.
Yeah.
Let them answer that, but.
Yeah.
I'll reserve.
Okay, sounds great.
For your future question.
Okay, Mr. Fisher, please.
I just want to ask for clarification so that nobody gets confused. Are the applicants asking for a waiver from the fire protection standards or just asking for mitigation from a different source? I just want to be sure that we're all clear that that's not an additional waiver as well of the fire protection standards.
They have not requested for a waiver of the fire protection standards.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Douglas?
Yeah, I was going to reserve that question, but since you just opened the door for it.
Okay.
On one of the maps, or I should say the plot line, it shows a fire hydrant somewhere on this large one. But if you go to their small one, I don't see it on there. So I'm just wondering, is there a fire hydrant on Site twenty-four?
I've been told there's not, and you can ask either our fire department representative or the applicant. I mean.
It's on, it's on.
Right.
It's on this. It's up in the corner where their entrance is. It looks like to me, I guess that's what it looks like. At least if you look at the drawing, it's existing fire hydrant, and then you go up to Site twenty-four. I don't know, maybe I'm wrong.
All right, we're going to hear from applicant who can provide some testimony to that particular question, and of course, we'll have the opportunity for questions downstream, which are not limited to applicant. You can also go back to staff.
Yeah, I will reserve.
There you go. All right, additional questions? All right, seeing none. We'll move into presentation from applicant. Thank you, Ms. Barge. Mr. Ashburner, do you want to go ahead and get your team sworn in?
How are you? Coming up, stand up.
Rachel Rayhan. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, members of the commission. I'm Cliff Ashburn with Dinsmore &amp; Scholl, one oh one South Fifth Street, Suite twenty-five hundred, Louisville four zero two zero two. I'm here today on behalf of the Hearth Foundation. One thing that I think will help with this discussion is just a little bit of history. As was mentioned, this case, a version of a subdivision on this property came before TRC back in 2023. That version included, that version included twelve lots, so twelve buildable lots. And so much more intense development on the subject property after that TRC meeting and some subsequent meetings with Oldham County Water, and obviously with the community, there was, the decision was made to pull back and come back before you with a much less intense proposal, which is what we're here talking about today. One thing to just correct, Anna, is the property is actually one hundred ninety-eight acres, not one hundred and eighty-nine. I made that mistake myself in the first draft of this, so don't worry. But I confirmed it with Mike before I stood up. So I have with me today Kirk Howell, who's with the Hearth Foundation. Kirk's family is, is the family who's going to own the three buildable lots. And he, to the extent that we need to hear from him, he'll be able to tell you what his plans are for those properties or for single-family homes. Mike Hill is here with Land Design and Development. Mike's firm drew the plan that we're talking about today, and Mike can give you a little bit more detail about the individual lots. As Anna mentioned, the property is zone CO one and AG one. Those are zones that allow for one-acre lots. The smallest lot that we have on the proposal before you is ten acres. So there's three buildable lots, two of which are about ten acres, and one is about fifteen acres. And then Lot four is about forty acres, Lot five, I think it's about eighty, and the Lot six, which is going which is going to be sold to the adjacent agricultural owner, is a little over 30. So let me, this is the, the subject property, as was mentioned. This is the location of the access. These are the three residential lots. The thought being that there is already a home here on the Reardon property. There's already a home on the property to the north. And the frontage along 524, which was previously shown as a series of five-acre building lots, is now being preserved along with the property just across the creek. Mr. Douglas, to answer your question, the blue lines that are on here are really just drainage ways. They're not, you know, defined blue perennial streams that would be subject to the jurisdiction of the Division of Water or the Army Corps. So the, the idea was really to have the access stay on one side of the stream, have all the lots on one side of the stream, and be able to use a shared access point there. This is just a closer-up look at those single-family lots. As I mentioned, there are three of them, 10 acres, a little over 10 acres, and a little over 15 acres that would all be using that shared access. With that, I'd like to ask Mike to come up and kind of walk you through the plan in a little more detail, and then I'll, I'll get up and talk about the variance and waiver requests and the binding elements.
Thanks, Cliff. Mike, Land Design and Development, 503 Washburn Avenue, Louisville 40222. All right, so this is our preliminary plan. So as mentioned, it's shy under 200 acres in its entirety. It currently exists in two parcels, so the end result will go from two parcels to six, only three of which are proposed for development, which is the three yellow parcels you see, which are proposed for single-family, privately-owned homes. Lots one and two are 10 acres, and then lot three is 15 acres. So, you know, we came through before with a more intense plan, had some different uses proposed than what we're proposing today, but what we ended up with and what the property owners have decided that they would like to preserve the existing character of the site as much as possible. So with that, the frontage, the entire 524 frontage, and then it often, it trails back into the rear as well, 86 acres, I believe. They're in discussion with a group that will preserve this area as a conservation easement, so it would not be built upon. True, they could divide that up, the 524 frontage. Further, they could, KTC could find a nice, flat, straight spot on there for some access points. They've told us that. But the goal and the intent is to develop the existing character of the 524 corridor as much as possible. So they would prefer not to develop up close to the road, even with driveways, even with utility construction. And it is true, if we did go, if we did access these three residential lots from 524 somewhere in this area, it would be several hundred feet of disturbance, creek crossing, just, just things that they're not interested in doing with their property. So what they've decided they would prefer to do is keep the houses located toward, toward the rear of the property, which is going to be several hundred feet from 524 in either direction, hidden from visibility by existing tree rows as much as possible. This property owner's been very meticulous in trying to define these property boundaries, as you see on this plan, to take into character, take into account the existing natural topography, natural tree lines, existing tree masses that are on the site. So that was their goal of what you see before you today, is trying to provide a nice, three nice home sites that will not disturb as much as possible the, the character of the area. So what that meant, well, there's a couple of rules that, that we have to address regarding road frontage and regarding shared access. So as mentioned, there's existing driveway located right here. When this lot was created in 2007 by this plat I have here, a 50-foot easement was, was created between that property owner and this subject property. So we are proposing to utilize that existing access easement rights that we have to propose a shared driveway, and I have another exhibit here in a second that I'll show you in more detail what that means. We've talked with the state transportation cabinet since 524 is a state highway regarding our ideas for the shared access location and the design of it. They are, they're accepting of our proposal as far as the location. They said that's why that location was granted an encroachment permit when that adjacent home was built several years ago. So with regard to any improvements we might need to make, whether we have to widen or adjust the existing driveway encroachment in that access easement, we will work with the state on a future encroachment permit as needed. State's aware of that. Another reason in keeping, using the shared driveway is, we're trying to, or I think another benefit, is reducing the number of driveways and conflict points that you have along 524. It's kind of a curvy corridor, curvy section of roadway. Fewer number of driveways, you know, creates lesser opportunities for potential conflicts as well as, excuse me, we're trying to singular, singularly locate an area for services to get them out of the curve off the road with regarding to mail, trash, bus pickup, things of that nature. So again, one, two, and three are single-family, private residential lots. Lot four, which is the leftover, kind of, kind of this U-shaped piece, which is here, which has more than 100 feet of road frontage here, no proposed development on this lot four at this proposed time. Lot five, 86 acres, that's proposed to be preserved in a conservation easement, which is, would be a written binding agreement to, to not develop any further in the future. And then lot six, the adjacent neighbor who, who lives in this property here, which has frontage on Oregon Creek Road, is interested in obtaining that for agricultural purposes. He wants to use it for cattle. And yes, we, we were able to add 300 feet of road frontage there because it, it worked out that way. He does not need a variance because we were able to, to meet the 300 feet of road frontage. If he desires to have a driveway somewhere in that 300 feet, he will have to contact Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for a driveway. I don't think he has any plans at this point in time to do anything with the property other than use it agriculturally. And then I have a slide that zooms in on our access area. So this is 524, kind of in the curve. This is existing 50-foot platted access easement that straddles our two property lines. This is Mr. Reardon's property that was created by Platte in 2007, at the same time that this 50-foot shared platted access easement was created. So what our idea is to utilize the existing access easement location, improve it as needed in discussions with the adjacent property owner and KTC to allow a single access entry into our site and then completely on our side of the property, outside of the access easement, some type of shared turnaround area where, you know, we could get the vehicles off 524 in a safe space, whether that be school buses, trash pickup, EMS, mail deliveries. And then beyond that, the shared driveway that leads to the three residential lots would, would extend in this direction. Again, it seems to be that, you know, the state seemed, the state tells us that that is a location that was acceptable for our driveway encroachment permit previously, and it would continue to be, whether it's one home or, or four homes or five homes. But we would continue the discussions with them on that regarding, you know, any improvements to that, to what that entrance looks like in the future.
Anything else?
Thanks, Mike. So going to the variance and waiver requests, I think Mike did a very good job kind of walking you through how the lot locations were selected and why we are asking for the variances and the waiver as well. KYTC is kind of driving that, and, and we do think that it, it actually creates a safer condition to have that single access point, especially if we have the opportunity to improve it with that area that service vehicles could come in and use. In addition, you know, these, Anna went through these, but I think it's worth mentioning the binding elements. So obviously, the plan you all approve, if you choose to approve it, would, would just be the one that's before you today. Any further subdivision is going to have to come back before the planning commission. So if you think of lot five as a concern, anything that happens there is going to have to come back before this commission. We've got the shared driveway. Obviously, we've got the, the obligation to comply with other law. And five and six, we think really handle the, can any issue with fire protection. So the applicant, we will work with the Fire Protection District. Major Smith is here on the selection of the fire mitigation system. We anticipate at this point that will be sprinklers in the structures, and that we will coordinate for construction inspection when those are being installed. I think you all have seen other matters where fire sprinklers have been used, unlike a fire hydrant that requires a significant amount of water and pressure because that water is going a great distance and then being sprayed over a large area. Fire sprinklers can operate with water pressure at about 10 PSI and, and 10 gallons per minute. So lower, lower pressure, lower gallons per minute, and obviously, they are able to directly address fires as they arise in a structure. One other thing I'll just, you know, again, reiterate, the zoning here is, it does allow those one-acre lots. That is not the Hearth Foundation's desire, is to see anything like that on this property, which is why they've come before you with lots that are a minimum of 10 acres. 10 acres kind of works with the lots, the residential lots that are near the property. The Reardon tract is 15 acres. I think the lot that's just to the north is somewhere between 10 and 15 acres, so that seems to be the pattern in the area, and that's what the Hearth Foundation is trying to do with this property. As was mentioned, there have been other proposals on the property. After hearing from the community, after hearing from TRC and agencies, the Hearth Foundation reconsidered its proposals, and, and this proposal that's before you today is much, much less intense than anything that was proposed before. And anything that would change about this proposal would certainly need to come back to the commission for approval. So I would ask that you follow the, the staff's analysis, which indicates that but for the waivers and variances, this does comply with the zoning and the subdivision regulations. As I said, Major Smith's here. If you, if you have questions about the fire protection. But otherwise, I think that the, the layout of the property, the anticipated use of the property is something that is well in keeping with what this part of Oldham County has and wants to continue to see, and so I would ask that you move for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashburner. Anyone else present wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application? All right, seeing none, we'll move into questions and testimony from those opposed to the application. Anyone wish to testify? I'll get you all, let's go ahead and get you all sworn, and then we'll collect names and addresses as you come to the podium, please.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
My name is Mary Lowry, 326 Maple Avenue, Pee Wee Valley, Kentucky. So in the application, which I can show you, I was delighted to hear that the applicant currently is seeking an easement for the 81-acre tract number five. So I have some questions for the applicant about the easement. Who are you talking to about the easement?
Nearby property over the bargers.
The bargers?
Uh huh.
So it's not in your control, it's in the neighbors' controls, to whether or not this is put in an easement? Is this a contingency for this subdivision? That this be put in easement?
If you're asking whether the lot five is, is to be shown as a preserved area, we really can't do that now. The idea is that the property would be conveyed to the bargers, and then the bargers have expressed an intention to put it in a conservation easement. As you all know, and I know, well, as some of you know, the way conservation, conservation easements work is they're essentially a charitable donation to a land conservancy organization. The value of the charitable donation is determined based on the pre-donation value of the land, and the land use goes into that. And then the post-donation, the restricted value of the, that is something that we think the bargers are in a better position to negotiate with whatever, whatever conservancy they choose to donate the conservation easement to. It's our intent, it's our understanding that that is going to move forward, but I cannot say that it will absolutely happen today because I believe that would be getting in the middle of the bargers' donation in the future.
But you've made this donation and this green space a major part of your presentation to Planning and Development, correct? I did? And it said in the presentation that the conservation easement agreement currently being sought by the applicant, so it's being sought by the neighbors eventually, when and if they purchase this property, correct? Okay. So the closing, I think, the closing of this conservation easement should be a contingency of your all's approval because the applicant has made this a very important part of their presentation. Also, I'd like to say this is a very sensitive area in the watershed, as Jim Silman pointed out. It is prone to erosion because of topography, and I ask that if you approve, you go above and beyond the current guidelines per silt fence and any, all and any ability to protect this watershed. And to the Planning and, and Zoning, Planning and Development Commissioners, I believe any waiver you grant creates a precedent and weakens your ability to make thoughtful and efficient decisions in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lowry. Who would like to go next?
I'm Josh Reardon. I'm the neighbor at 1115 East Highway 524. I'm not, I'm not for the shared driveway. I think it's going to create hardship for me during the construction process of it. It's also a terrible spot to have four or five families trying to use at one time. There's a big curve right there. There's blind spots in that curve. And I don't understand why he has, his previous plan, he had a drive going in at the top of the hill where it's straight, and you can see, I understand he's got a conservation area there now. Why couldn't he have put an easement through that conservation area when he made the plan and use the, the drive that he originally had going down and over the creek in the original plan that he had? That's about all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Reardon. Who would like to go next?
My name is Trish Henriann. I live at 1309 Park Shore Road, La Grange. Several, for several reasons, I am opposed to this development, this subdivision. For several reasons, I am opposed to this development, this subdivision. It begs the question why one would even have to be applying for a major subdivision approval when, if the intent truly is just to have three families, three lots, then that whole property could be divided into three tracts, I would think, and then they wouldn't even have to be concerned with these waivers. When you start adding up multiple waivers, I think it, it's something to consider, just as a gentleman just said, more waivers granted, less ability in the future, sets a precedent. If you're going to grant waivers for one, you should grant waivers for the other, even though they're not asking for a waiver on the fire suppression. Again, it's, it's in place, it's a requirement that's in place for a reason, for public safety, for liability. And, you know, sprinklers are great, but they do, they are not a substitute for fire flow and the requirement is fire flow. They can propose a mitigation system. It doesn't guarantee that it's an adequate mitigation system. The question of sprinklers failing, who's going to inspect it? Those are details to be worked out, I understand, but those are important details. So if those details are still just hypothetical and not worked out, then I certainly wouldn't think it's appropriate to approve a mitigation plan that isn't fully worked out. The blind spot, that's a terrible area on that, on that road. I think it, very warranted concern about multiple families accessing at that point, that same access point on a, on a curve like that. Also, the, the environmental impact and sensitivity of the area. Just for all those reasons, I think you should not approve this. Thanks.
Thank you. Who would like to go next?
My name is Tom Fuller, 1415 Rebel Ridge Road, La Grange. And I want to know, ask the applicant, who is going to own these lots?
So that was, that was part of our presentation. The three residential lots will be owned by Kirk and Kim Howell, that's Kirk Howell right there, and his two adult children.
Is that personal, is that separate from the Hearth?
Yeah.
They will, that's separate then?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, just to be, if I can, just to be clear, the ownership of property, while it may be relevant to this discussion, does not create or destroy compliance with the subdivision regulations. These are single-family lots. I testified before, they will be owned by the Howells personally. But you all should be looking at this not based on who owns it, but based on the subdivision regulations.
Well, my point is the ownership now is for them, but later on, can they change that back to the mission statement? Their mission statement is to house missionaries, national, international people, bringing them in and out. Can that be changed back real quickly later on? Is this a loophole?
Mr. Fuller, I'm, I'm going to stop you there, Mr. Ashburner, okay? So the purview of this commission is, is, is the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations, that is beyond our scope.
I was clarifying the ownership of this, is what I wanted to clarify.
I don't think there's any dispute about that, right? I get that. So with respect to zoning ordinance or subdivision regulations, any questions?
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Who would like to go next? I had seven of you sworn.
Tyler Despain, 1216 East Highway 524.
One more time, please, will you pull that mic just a little bit closer? There you go.
Despain, 1216 East Highway 524, La Grange. My question is, if this is not a conservation area right now, as of today, what's being approved today, why can't these, the access be on 524 where that should be conservation, but today it's not? Why can't they change their access? That's my question.
Mr. Ashburner, do you want to address that now?
So this is going to be a little bit longer answer, I apologize. As, as was mentioned before, the, the intent for Lot 5 is it will be sold to a, a family that is interested in then donating a conservation easement that would cover it. Conservation easements are judged based on what is currently on the property, the conservation values. So conservation values can be things like large stands of trees, it can be things like uninterrupted streams, it could be subterranean caves, you know, different natural aspects of the property that would not be affected or that would be affected by development potentially, but will now not be affected by development. Okay. What's that?
The lot.
No, that's okay. That's all right. I mean, well, you may need to in a minute, but, so the plan that's before you, that is hidden behind the screen, includes minimizing stream crossings because that helps protect the watershed that was mentioned by one of the other speakers. So the idea is to minimize creek crossings by using the creek crossing that is 524 right now and entering the property on the north side. That's, that's the thinking behind it. Yes, it is possible, physically possible, to run a driveway through there, but doing that will lower the, quote, "conservation value" of the property and make the ultimate conveyance and conservation easement less likely. So we're trying to, to keep that opportunity open. Thank you.
But as of today, there is no conservation area.
That's right.
And the ruling for today is based on what's in existence today.
That's, yeah.
So why wouldn't they be able to change the lots and access properly instead of having it a safety issue at the bottom of a hill where there's a sharp curve?
I don't, I don't know if there's a question there. Is it, do you want me to answer that or?
If you have an answer, go ahead.
I mean, the answer is that KYTC has looked at the access point as proposed and approved it. And KYTC, among everybody, is an organization that is very, very concerned about safety. There's an existing access point on 524. KYTC has been apprised that now there will be three additional homes coming off of that access point and has had no issue with it. So, you know, different people have different judgment. I'm going to trust that KYTC understands road safety and accept their comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spain. Who would like to go next?
Hello, I'm Rick Barter, 7821 Covington Ridge Cut Off, Westport, Kentucky. I, forgive me, I came in late. I was running from the parking lot. I'm not sure what stage of things we're at, but I know I was mentioned. So, and there's been a big deal made about the conservation area.
Did we get you sworn earlier?
I have not been sworn.
Let's go ahead and swear you in.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
There was some mention of the conservation area that we are trying to purchase or, and I think it's a little cart before the horse, but we have a handshake agreement with the Howells. We do not have a contract yet. We're still in the process. I think, I think that's been made clear, but I'm not sure. Our intent for everyone here is, at some point, and we're not sure what that point is, is to put that land that we purchased into a conservation easement. We have not determined our conservation partner at this time. We are not sure what that timing might be. It may be dependent on tax benefits, it may be dependent on what happens in our, in our lives or whatever, but we are in discussions with the Howells. We do not have a formal contract as yet. We are working toward that, but I just want to be clear with everybody that there is no formal agreement at this time, but that is the intent, is to make it a conservation area. Do with that what you will.
Thank you.
Garant Morgan, 1000 East, Highway 524. Has any of y'all seen the entrance that they want to use? Nobody? You should take a look at it. My granddaddy built it 90 years ago for a horse and buggy and the poor old thing put a rat in on a hill in a curve. The most dangerous entrance, one of the most in the state. So if you don't want a major lawsuit, you better go look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please.
I'd just like to reiterate that even though the Kentucky transportation may have not a problem with the access point, it's a, it's a rule, it's a regulation that you all have. It may not be their regulation, but it's your regulation. Shared access points, no more than three, three lots. So we're now talking about five lots, I think. So it's a rule and rules are in place for a reason. You adhere to rules for the greater good. Your obligation is to the greater good for the community. Your obligation is to the community, not an individual. It's not your obligation to either make things easy for someone to do something, it's to follow the rules. Just like fire mitigation, it's a rule. You have the discretion, if you're convinced a mitigation system is appropriate, adequate. In the past, I don't believe that the commission has granted sprinklers as an adequate mitigation for subdivision. I could be wrong. Rules are in place for a reason. We follow them for the greater good of the community.
Thank you, Ms. Henriann. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, Robert Blyfer, I live at 1200 East Highway 524. I've lived at that property since July of 2018. Between July of 2017 and 2018, we rented a house down on the other side of the conservation park and I would just like to repeat what has been said about how dangerous that blind curve is coming around there. It is not safe to then add more traffic to that spot. We used to, prior to when that land was deeded over, I think it was in 2007, Mr. Morgan, who spoke to you already, we used to ride horses on the farm and that was when it was still owned on both sides of the road and we would have to cross in that one spot and that was a spot where we were warned, like one horse at a time. No one can see you coming, you can't see them, and that's the same thing for the cars and now garbage trucks, mail trucks, and anything else that will have to use that spot. And then another consideration for that shared access point is that road frontage was split between Mr. Morgan and his brother when that property was deeded over by their grandfather and meant a sort of keeping peace between two brothers that they could each, regardless of one's desires, be able to gain access to that spot. Now it's two completely different parties and I kind of feel like that should have some bearing on that shared easement. So that's, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that was everyone I had sworn.
Can I say something? You didn't swear him in. I'm sorry. He didn't get sworn in.
Were you sworn earlier, sir?
Yeah, he was, he stood up.
I had a total of eight sworn, after all, and I have eight speakers, okay?
He stood up.
It's all right. Okay? All right. So where do you want to go, guys? You want to continue with this? You want a break for a bite? Let me know how you want to go with this here, right? You want to push through to the end of this one and take a break? We're going to be taking a break because I'm not going to have you all on some kind of march like.
Sandwiches ordered, she's going to get them out.
Oh, have you? Okay.
Yeah, but that's a secret.
All right, so we're going to move forward then, okay? So if we are at the end of opposition, questions and testimony, then we are going to move into questions from the commission. Okay? Who has questions, commissioners? Sam?
I'm not sure where this question needs to go. On this shared access easement here, is the present land owner with the access easement required to share it?
I think that would be illegal, kind of.
Because he expressed, he expressed that he does not want to, so is he required to?
Do you want me to answer?
If you know the answer, because I sure don't.
KYTC says this is where it needs to be, but is, is he required to share this easement?
So, Mr. Finney, the, the easement was on a minor subdivision plat that was created in 2007 when the parcel that we're talking about that Mr. Reardon currently owns was created. It is 50 feet wide, 25 feet on his side of the line, 25 feet on the Hearth Foundation side of the line. So it is a shared access easement, it is called that on the plat. It is not a discretionary situation. Modifications, if we were to go outside of the 50 feet, so if for some reason the geograph, you know, kind of the, the bend of the road had to go outside of that 50-foot area, then yes, we would absolutely have to get Mr. Reardon's consent to do that, to modify that. But as long as we're operating within that access easement, and, and, would you mind waking this up so I can show them the?
The password's here if you ever need it. Just so you control all the links.
I'll figure that out two days before I retire.
There you go.
Thank you. So you can see it here, and there's a deed book and page number on there, that's the, the sell-off deed where this access easement was created. So if we were to modify the access easement in such a way that it went outside of that area, certainly, we would have to ask Mr. Reardon and Mr. Reardon would have to agree and he would be well within his rights not to agree to modify at that point. The access, though, that is shown is well within the 50-foot access easement and the improvement, the turnaround that's being shown here is all on the Hearth Foundation's property. So we, we are intending to use the easement just as it was prescribed, we're just putting a few more houses on it.
So the, so the easement actually sits 50% on Mr. Reardon's property and 50% on the Hearth Foundation property?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything additional, Sam? Okay, who else has questions? Ms. Nassar?
So along the same line is typically we'll see a binding element of a maintenance agreement that is needed for that. Is that going to become, I don't see that in the binding elements. Is that needed? Is it?
It is required, Ms. Nassar, for what it's worth.
Right.
There is no avoiding that agreement.
Okay.
All right.
Second question relating to the binding elements. I see two binding elements, number 5 and 6, related to fire protection. Could I get a little more insight into what is needed, what is available at the property and what is needed at this property?
Yes, ma'am. You know the drill.
I know the drill.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right.
Keith Smith, I'm fire marshal for the La Grange Fire Protection District, address 309 North First Avenue, La Grange, Kentucky 40031. So you were asking about the fire mitigation. Under normal circumstances with the subdivision plans and all like this, you would be putting in fire hydrants. The system that is
The system that is in place for water at this time will not support the fire hydrants that need to be put in. They will not supply five hundred gallons per minute. So, our main job and mine with the Fire Department and Fire Safety is that of life safety and property preservation. Kind of like doing, you know, your maintenance on a house or on your car. We look at it as, you know, there needed to be a an item in place, should I say, to help with the lack of fire hydrants. We do operate tankers with the department. Now, that part of 524, one gentleman said something about a hydrant being down there at one point. The only thing I know of is maybe a flush hydrant, and we don't use those. We'd actually talked to the water company at one time about putting another hydrant down on the other side of Conservation Road to help with tankers. But it wasn't feasible because of the lack of flow and the gallons per minute. So what I did was, and amongst our staff, command staff, we talked about this, and we felt like the best interest of the property owners for those three homes would be to install, it's known as a 13R, a residential-type sprinkler system. As was mentioned before, somebody did, they use a whole lot less pressure. They're always on, ready to react. It is meant for life safety, to give the occupants time should they activate, to give them more time to get out of the house safely. They're not like your Walmart or larger sprinkler systems. They're meant for extinguishment. It's mostly for life safety and to assist with that property preservation. So, in speaking to Mr. Hill and to Kurt earlier about all this, they were in agreement with our suggestion about the 13R sprinkler system being installed in these three homes there. Should there be other homes down the road and, you know, improvements to the other properties, then they would be coming back, and we would most likely, unless there was some huge improvement in the water system down there, go along with that same that same recommendation. Did that answer your question on it? Okay, all right. Anybody else question for me?
Can I ask one?
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Me or him?
Both of you. You want to arm wrestle?
Okay. Good afternoon, Major.
Hi, Mr. Douglas.
Was there discussion about a hydrant with a cistern located somewhere within the property?
You know, we had thought about that at one time. If it was a larger development, we might consider something like that. I know that there was another case.
We don't have to go into that one, but...
Yeah. And cisterns were talked about. As I mentioned to Ms. Nassar here, that, you know, we do have shuttle operations, and so immediately with our department, we have three tankers that hold between seventeen hundred and two thousand gallons of water. And should there ever be an incident at this property or any around, we're going to have mutual aid, be it from North Oldham, from Ballardsville or something, automatic response, and they're going to be bringing us tankers also. Again, this system that we're proposing...
But your response time is going to be...
Oh, out to there? Yeah, yeah, from our station.
The building will be gone by then.
It's going to be there, but that's why we mentioned the 13R system. It gives the occupants protection to get out there. Once we get there, yeah, we'll be good on that, be it it's a little bit of a distance to our Station Three, which would be the closest hot hydrant to refill those tankers. But our concern is, like I said, you know, to prevent property destruction and to get the people out, and we just feel like that the sprinkler systems, I mean, that's what they're putting big buildings for. This is just on a little bit smaller scale, same principle.
Do you know what the fire rating is for that, for temperature on the piping of those? If there's an...
I don't know on the piping. I can tell you most likely they would be, as far as bursting pressure on the Blazemaster that would probably be used, is like two hundred, two hundred and twenty-five PSI. I don't know that temperature rating. The heads themselves would probably be one hundred and fifty-five degree heads.
Right.
Once it reached that part of the, you know, ceiling in that area only. Maybe to give you a little better understanding on this also, once it goes off, that one sprinkler goes off, every one of them in the house doesn't come on and flood the house. Once the temperature reaches a hundred and fifty-five degrees in that area, then that discharges. If it moves to another area, that one would discharge, but they don't all come on and flood everything all at once.
Just to use your expertise, if it's an attic fire, what happens to the course of those sprinklers at that point in an attic fire?
They're not going to go off until in the area that it reaches. Now, you can you can construct sprinklers into attic areas. The bad part about it is, and we have this in nursing homes and so forth around, we'll have problems during, you know, really hard freezes of where those pipes can freeze and burst. About the only good solution to that is having a, what's known as a dry system being put in the attic area, and, you know, a wet system, or you'd probably put a dry system in the whole thing. But 13R doesn't cover those types.
So once again, we're in a mitigating situation where standards... We, have you implemented any mitigating circumstances of sprinklers, inspecting them yet?
13Rs do not have to be inspected.
Exactly.
Right.
We're going to discuss this again, I guess.
Like a commercial one.
So we're going to leave it up to the homeowner?
It is left up to the homeowner.
To decide if they're going to turn the water on or leave the water off?
That's possible as well. Yeah, I don't know why anybody would choose to turn one off. It's not eating up any money and all while it's just sitting there not discharging.
Possibly in the wintertime.
Inside the house, down in insulated parts, that would be highly unlikely, I'd say. Yes, sir.
And do you guys inspect commercial residential?
We do inspect commercials, but just like your single-family dwelling home, I have no authority to come into it and say, "I'd like to inspect your home." Multiple-family dwellings, yes, I can do that.
There are ordinances now about smoke detectors in the county, correct?
Yes, sir, there are. There are.
And if somebody builds one...
And the building code dictates that.
Correct.
Yes, with KBC.
Just thinking that on mitigating factors, when you don't have fire hydrants, we seem to be, of course, we're dealing with what we have on the books.
Yes, sir.
Right now.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We still seem to be dealing with the same. Relying on...
Yeah, and until that whole water system was upgraded, you're not going to have hydrants down in those areas. You depend on the water shuttles and the tanker operations, which once we get there and we start establishing that water supply and refilling, then we're in good shape. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome.
Can I, can I answer part of that question that I have my own? So you mentioned the attic fire. Once again, Major Smith had mentioned earlier that the point of the sprinkler system is to either extinguish a fire in its early stages, called the incipient phase of fire, okay? When a fire is small, let's say firing a waste basket starts, it trips that hydrant, or that sprinkler, when it gets to a certain temperature, and would hopefully put out that fire in its early stages so that there's never a problem. Or to initiate occupant egress, so that when the Fire Department does arrive at a remote location, the family is standing outside, safe from all harm. And at that point, they're going to do property conservation and try to save what they can save, and keep it from any exposures, which in this case, they're on ten-acre lots, and there's not going to be any. So in the event of the attic fire, if they choose to not put sprinklers in there, which are subject to freezing, the sprinkler system will be designed to activate when it does reach that temperature, so that hopefully then, between that and the smoke detectors, the occupants are notified, and they're able to get out of the structure safely. So that would be the point of the sprinkler. My question is in regards to the hydrant, because in one of their diagrams, it did show a hydrant, as well as in their plants just across the street from the easement. Is that a flush hydrant that you all are not going to connect to? And then the second part of that question is, you mentioned the closest hydrant for tanker fill operations would be Station Three. Can you tell us the proximity of that distance between the entrance to those properties in Station Three?
I'll answer. Second part, our address of Station Three is 2800 East Highway 42. I have not measured that exact distance from there to, what is this, 1201? Or something, I think, Highway 524?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have not on our map measured that out. And then in the second part to the question there, I'm sorry, Ryan, I forgot what the first...
I probably forgot what I asked you to.
Yeah.
We're in bad shape.
Was that a hydrant?
Right, that hydrant across the street.
That hydrant down there, I'm almost certain it is a small flush hydrant. It's not, you know, it's not a regular full-size hydrant. You might get, you know, one hundred and fifty, two hundred gallons out of that thing, if that. But that would be it. Yeah.
Okay. I'll also elaborate too a little bit on the smoke detectors in the building code, so you know, the sprinkler system, and as far as any maintenance required, it's not a lot different than the building code requires smoke detectors. And in some older homes, those aren't hardwired, so that we rely on the homeowners to replace batteries, and that we know people still die in home fires every year because people take the batteries out of smoke detectors. So the reliance on anybody to maintain any situation, whether it's a smoke detector that's required by building code, or in this case, sprinklers, is clearly dependent upon a little bit of stance from the homeowner. And then in commercial sprinkler inspections, I don't know what you all do, but in my former career when we did it, was we essentially went and made sure a sprinkler company had come and checked the system and certified it by a tag. So even the Fire Department's ability to go into a commercial sprinkler system and say, "Oh yeah, that sprinkler system is good," is very minimal as well, because you rely on sprinkler companies testing of that system.
Correct, yes. With the commercial companies, I go in during my inspections, I was at Walmart the other day, I'll use them. They have five systems. Yes, five systems in Walmart. And I ask for the inspection report, because whoever did the inspection, they will note discrepancies at the bottom of it. I can walk up to the thing at any time, and I can look, hey, I've got pressures on all five systems, you know, that type of thing. But I do require them to provide me with that. I can call most sprinkler companies and have them email me one. But again, it's not required on that 13R, and we do, like Ryan said, depend on the property owners to do it. I would not want to be that property owner if there was an incident at the house, and there was a loss of life or something of that nature, and they found out that the sprinkler system had been turned off, or the battery's not put back in the smoke detectors. I'm not a lawyer or an insurance person, but I don't think that'd be a good thing. Yeah.
All right, Ms. Kraus?
So, let's say they came back and they were going to put, this is just out of my curiosity, is what you would suggest in the future. If they did want to put buildings on four or five, or they wanted to break up lots one, two, and three and make them multiple lots down the road, at what point would the Fire Department say, "We need hydrants in place, and we need, you know, so much pressure in place"?
Again, you know, they're going to, if they have that, they're going to be coming back to you all
Right.
if they want to do a minor plat on a particular property. And then same thing for each individual ones. I don't know as you would get to that and say, "Here, you have to totally improve this whole system down here and run hydrants up here." It's probably, while it sounds, you know... I'm not trying to downgrade the requirements in any way, but in a very rural area, we do the best with what we have. The number of hydrants is typically very limited. That's why we have three tankers to try and do the, we call them dump-and-run operations. I doubt that they would be any hydrants installed if there was two or three more homes out there. It would probably be much the same. Every, it's all a case-by-case basis, but I'm thinking very similar mitigation with making that 13R system a requirement.
Okay, and this area looks like it has a lot of trees. Is that any concern with spread, or...
The only time that those things concern us is driveways going in that the property owner keeps the canopy, you know, high enough for our trucks to get in and along the sides of it. My chief has got a great saying. He always says, you know, "We can impress upon the property owners that they've got a million-dollar house, but they've got a hundred-dollar driveway." They have to be kept up. The canopies have to be trimmed down for the trees and so forth, or, you know, it's going to delay the Fire Department getting there. I name quite a few places that are like that and all. And I name quite a few people that have taken, probably spent quite a bit of money on keeping their properties up that are also sprinkled, and that's the best thing in the world you can do, is just maintain your property properly. Any other questions?
All right, Mr. Douglas, you need?
I don't think I have a question for the Major right now, but I do have a question for the applicant's attorney. And, you know, I think, I think probably a lot of the oppositions probably just want some clarity. And I think Mr. Fuller was, and maybe his approach was a little different, but we were provided in our packet some of the information that Mr. Fuller provided to us about the Hearth Foundation. And I know Kurt, I don't know you personally, but, you know, Mr. Howe, I appreciate you being here, but can we ensure the opposition that what's being proposed to us about three houses being built on one, two, and three, is houses being built for him and his family?
We can, because we've testified to that already.
You said that.
Yeah.
And I agree with you.
If you want Kurt to say it.
Well, no, I'm just saying that Mr. Fuller brought this in, or somebody brought it in, and in our packet. And, you know, we are, you know, at least the planning commission, at least I know, that CO1 and AG1 could have religious facilities on them. It's permitted uses.
Right.
You're proposing three houses and conservation easement, hopefully, down the road, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
And that's what you're telling us today?
That's what we're telling you today, that's what we've told you today. I'll give you a little bit more context. So, I was just conferring with Mike over here because of the water discussion. So, 2023, as I mentioned, there was a different plan before the TRC that had twelve lots on it. It was brought up at that meeting that, you know, we have a fire ordinance that does require certain amounts of pressure. We had conversation with Russ Rose over at Oldham County about what would it take to get that kind of pressure on this property? And the answer was, you'd have to upgrade the line all the way from US 42. It is a multimillion-dollar improvement. The only way that that water line, or not the only way, the most likely way that that water line is going to get upgraded from 42 to this property is if somebody buys this property, buys the whole thing, and decides that they want to develop it with one-acre lots. You know, the Hearth Foundation came in initially with a very ambitious plan. It included the entire mission of... It included the entire mission of the Hearth Foundation. After hearing from people in the community, and after hearing about infrastructure demands, and the cost of things, the leadership of the Hearth Foundation said, "You know what? We probably can't do it all. So, we need to back up, back away from that, and try to come up with a way to get, you know, a logical, reasonable use of the land, given the infrastructure that's available, and given the concerns that the community raised, which is why the plan that's before you today is before you. That's why it's three lots, that's why they're talking to the barter's about acquiring the property and conserving it. That's why the Lot 6 is planned to be sold to that adjoining owner. So, this is not a, you know, let us get this, and then we're really going to come back with something. This is, we heard everybody, we're trying to do what can be done on the property in a reasonable and rational way. Consulted with the fire department about the sprinklers, you know, I've-
So-
Yeah.
Since you're here, since we're going to discuss it, there's been concern about the curb, and there's concern about the existing access easement 50-foot.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any way to get you guys to fit in somehow or another a 300-foot access away from that curb somewhere, to get to lots 1, 2, 3, and 4?
I mean, I think I answered this before-
I know you answered it because of the creek.
Yeah, I mean, part of it is because of the creek. Part of it is, there's been an expressed desire to conserve this property.
Right.
If you run a road through the middle of the area that is to be conserved, and that includes a stream crossing, it becomes less attractive to conserve, because at that point, it is more impacted. Um, and, you know, as I said, the agency with review authority over this road has, is aware of this application. The amount of traffic that will be generated by three additional homes at that access point did not concern them, to the point where they said, "You can't have the access." So, I mean, yeah, physically, it is possible, but I think it is a situation where if that happens, then some of the other things that we intend, and that Mr. Barter spoke about, are less likely to happen.
So, how much actual room, Mr. Hill may be able to answer that, in that curb, where you can modify that, because you only got 50-foot, and you may have to do some modification in that easement area? How much access do you have not to encroach the creek area?
The frontage, and I'll go to this exhibit, because it zooms in on that area. The frontage of Lot 4, which is from this point northward to our shared property line, is 136 feet. So, we have 136 feet to work with. Um, you know, 25 of that is within our side of the access easement. Um, there is room to avoid the stream, and of course, this is conceptual, but we've got room to create some type of a turnaround area that will avoid the stream as much as possible, if it all completely is the hope. Um, of course, we'll work with Jim Solomon's office, and whatever agencies are required once we determine the geometrics of that. But, um, you know, we've designed a 35-foot radius, is what you see there, as far as a turnaround area, which is large enough for, you know, larger vehicles to utilize for three-point turns.
So, you could, so you could expand it at least 120 feet?
We don't want to, though.
I know you don't want to, but you could.
There is room, but it slopes down-
Instead of asking for zero variance?
Well, tech, well, no, the lots, the lots in the back have zero road frontage, regardless.
But, your access easement is what, now, 50-foot?
Correct.
And you could expand that to what?
Expand the access easement width?
Yeah, because you have a property owner that may not be wanting to share with you.
Oh, you're saying, utilize all of our side of the exit? Yes, there is room on our side to do the improvements.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
One thing I just, if I can just clarify that-
Sure, I knew you were going to.
Right. Um, as I mentioned before, the access easement already exists. So, that, the, I desire to let you have access, or I don't. That decision was made in 2007, when this lot was carved off. If you're talking about, you know, relocating, tree clearing, things that would improve site distance, um, or widening the entrance a little bit, I think that is something that is certainly in Mike's wheelhouse.
And also, being a good neighbor.
The issue, I think, you really don't want to have two separate entrances there. You want to have a single access point-
Right.
-that everybody knows and can expect. Um, the other thing is, KYTC is only going to allow the entrance to be so big-
Right.
Uh, and the radius is, yeah, to be so big. So, while I think there may be opportunities for safety improvements, and certainly Kirk and Mike can explore that, I don't want anybody to get the impression, we're going to create a 100-foot wide driveway that people would be able to use.
I'm just trying to get you to-
Yeah.
-think outside the box there a little bit.
All right, further questions from the commission? Before we go into those, and folks, I see you, you have an opportunity to come rebuttal, okay? We will have that opportunity. Commission's time is, we've consumed all of the commission's time, so how much more time do you wish to put for commission's questions? 10 minutes? I have one, okay. All right, so we'll go with one more.
Okay, and it's really to clarify more, I think, what you were asking. I think we've all seen in this package, the website, gohearth.org? And are we saying that the money that's, you know, being requested for donations, and all that kind of thing, is not for this property anymore?
Um, okay, yeah. That's really outside of our scope, so we're going to have to tap the brakes right there.
Sounds fine.
Okay, thank you. All right, further questions from the commission? All right. Rebuttal, applicant.
Well, I think we've covered a lot during the commission's questions, so I'm not 100% sure that I have a lot to add, but I'll just take a couple of quick minutes. As we said at the beginning, as I've reiterated, there were plans for more intense development of this property. Those plans, you know, were not well-received, and there was concern about infrastructure and what could work on the property. I mentioned before that the alternative of, you know, just selling the property to a single property owner or developer, who wants to upgrade the water system and things like that, you know, maybe that's a possibility, but that's not what the Hearth Foundation came out, bought this property to do. Ultimately, the Hearth Foundation did initially buy this property with a much more ambitious plan, but after going through the process a couple times, and getting a lot of feedback, that plan has now been scaled back to three residential lots, one reserved area, and then kind of exit strategies for two of the larger chunks on the property that cover more than half of the land that we're talking about. The concern about the access easement that was raised, you know, again, that access easement was put in place in 2007, when this lot was created. There is no limitation on the number of lots that can be accessed off it, other than the regulations, which is why we're asking for the waiver. We've asked, and Mike has provided testimony to you, about why the home sites are where they are. Uh, it's a desire to use the existing stream crossing, not to have more stream crossings, and really to have homes near other homes in this area. It would have been great if Conservation Park Road allowed for more access, but it didn't. So, we're kind of stuck dealing with the property as it is. I think that you all should look at this in totality. It's 198 acres. There are plans for more than half of it not to be developed at all. And actually, a significant proportion beyond half of it not to be developed at all, really about 150 of the 198 acres, and plans to develop three residential lots on 35 acres. The zoning allows for lots as small as one acre. These lots are designed to match what is around it. You've also heard from the fire marshal about the use of residential sprinkler systems. I recognize that there are people who have concerns about that, but you have to put something in place. And a sprinkler system frankly, is often a safer option, in terms of life safety, than having the fire department come and spray water on the outside of the structure. The fire house, just so you know, is 2.2 miles away from here. So, I think the response time would be actually quite quick. What's that? It's 2.2, that's, the address was 2800 US 42?
Correct.
Yeah. So, it's 2.2 miles away from here, we mapped it while you all were talking. So, I think the mitigation is there. The access, KYTC has kind of driven us to use the access point that's shown. We are certainly willing to explore safety improvements, if those are necessary, at the time that that access ultimately gets used, these lots get created, which I hope that you all will approve. And the variance to, or the, yeah, the variance to allow the three residential lots not to have any frontage, I think has been well-explained. So, again, three buildable lots, 198 acres. We have sort of exit strategies for the rest of the property, and we would ask that you approve the waivers, approve the variance, and let us go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashburner. All right, rebuttal from those opposed. And I'll remind everyone, this is rebuttal. We are not accepting new testimony at this moment, so rebuttal of what has been discussed is the limitation and scope that you're dealing with, okay?
Got it. So, as far as the fire department being 2.2 miles away, it's a volunteer house. So, those volunteers have to get to the fire department first. And again, on this project summary and justification that you all were given, I'm going to say the same thing, the conservation, quote, "The conservation easement agreement currently being sought by the applicant." It's not being sought by the applicant. It's predicated on the purchase of that land by the neighbor, and, and the neighbor putting that in a conservation easement. There's no written agreement between the two, as Mr. Barter said. It's not in, it's in process, but you all haven't seen anything that you know that this will happen. I think this is a huge part of this entire development, keeping that as green space. And again, I think you all need to look at that, and make this contingent upon that property being put in conservation easement, or at the very least, having a written agreement. But, that's not, you know, that's not, that can change. Thank you.
Who else would like to speak?
Uh, the drawing up there is not exactly right. But anyway, they keep talking about a turnaround. They can put a dozen, 100. What, how's that going to get them back out on the street? It's not going to help a bit. They can just keep adding turnarounds. It's not going to get them out of that curve. They can't come, go that way, they got to come this way. That puts them in the creek. These old boys must not have been down there and checked it out real good, or they'd know that. They don't know what's going on over the hill. I was born and raised there, I know there's a creek there. Now, further the way this, you come this way, the steeper it is, the sharper the curve is. Talking about water, there's a doctor that lives right here, on top of the hill. 30-pound pressure is all he can get. Do you know that? Dr. Fred, he couldn't be here today, he said he had to work, but 30-pound pressure. Thank you.
I think that what it comes down to is, although we should feel lucky, I guess, that it's only three building lots requested conservation land that may or may not be conserved, and then another larger lot may be purchased by a farmer. Lot of maybes, lot of waivers, no road frontage for three lots, zero. Another waiver for another lot that has less than the 300. The reason the rules exist, the reason the requirements exist, is for protection and consistency and guidance for development. Development, whether it's three, or 12, or 20, yes, it's exponential, you know, the complications, but the infrastructure is not there. The road is narrow, the road is windy, it's a bad curve, and you're going to allow multiple access to lots on that one point. If truly, and this is a question I have, if truly the objective was to just make it a family compound, it's not going to be for missionaries, it's going to be for three homes, and we want to keep a lot of green space, why is the not, why is the proposal not three tracts? Three tracts, lots of green space, lots of preservation of the trees and the natural essence that they claim to want to preserve? Why not three lots? It's not a major subdivision regu, you know, it doesn't fall under major subdivision regulations. It's a question I have. Asking for variances on road frontage, variances on access point, and fire mitigation. To me, that says, no. You want to have three homes, do a small plat, do a minor plat, not a major subdivision, unless there's some other future intention.
I'd just like to say that I really don't care what he does with his ground, but I also don't feel that I should have to be, that's my only way in and out. I get up and go to work every day at 3:00 in the morning. He's in there redoing a driveway. Why am I put in a position where maybe I can't get out and go to work that day? Or whatever I need to do. I mean, he doesn't live there right now. All this stuff that he's proposing, yeah, that's, some of it looks good, but I still have to be able to get out and go to work every day. And with him doing this construction down there on the end of my driveway, I feel like that's going to put me in a hard spot. Thank you.
Have you spoken previously?
No.
Okay, let's go ahead and get your name and address for the record.
Tony Finch, 1815 Circleview Drive.
I'll need to get you sworn in, just a sec, okay?
Yep.
Address once more.
1815 Circleview Drive, LaGrange.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
My question is, this is state highway, right? Is there a road study that has been done for this entrance for a subdivision?
Ms. Barge? Did you give us that info as you kicked off?
Yes, I did, and because of traffic generation numbers, they're not generating enough traffic for a road study to be needed, according to our regulations.
In that curve also?
Come back to the mic, please.
In that curve also?
Correct, that could be anywhere in the county that they're putting this development, and if they don't generate enough traffic numbers to deem a traffic study- they don't generate enough traffic numbers to deem a traffic study necessary, then we do not require it. The access on 2524 is determined by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet.
I'm also a construction driver with dump trucks, concrete trucks, and in order to be able to get in that, you're going to have to pull in, back up, pull in to get to where you need to go. So you're in a blind curve. As a worker trying to get in a spot like that, I think you're I think it's too dangerous to do that without having to either straighten out a road or move the location. That's just, I wouldn't want to do it.
Right? Thank you. Anyone else? All right, guys. We're going to move into final statements at this time. Anyone from the opposition wishing to provide a final statement? Enough said. Very well. Mr. Ashburner?
So you all are required to make your decisions based on evidence, not insinuation, not fear, not what if, but on evidence that's presented to you. The evidence that's been presented to you today is that the lots are the correct size. The fire department is satisfied with the mitigation that has been proposed, given the existing system that's present. And this proposal, even if you just assumed that all of the lots were buildable, which we're not proposing, would be six lots on 198 acres. So an average of 30 some lots. Now, that complies with your subdivision regulations, that more than complies, and what's proposed before you today more than complies. So I think that you have really one vote that you can make, which is to approve the proposal. Now, one thing that we can offer that I think may address some concern, within the binding elements, there is a statement about preliminary plan has to come, I'm sorry, no subdivision of any lot into a greater number of lots without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission. I think that we would agree on lots four, five, and six, that we would bring back residential building permits, residential building proposals on lots four, five, and six back to this commission, if that was a concern. We have mentioned before the planned exit, the planned sale to agricultural owner that's directly adjacent, the planned sale to the barters, which they intend to conserve, and holding lot four just as open space at this time. We'd be willing to agree that in addition to no further subdivision, that a residential building would have to come back before the planning commission on those lots. So I hope that that will address some of the concern that has been raised by those folks who are speaking in opposition. With regard to the conservation easement and this and this statement that, well, it should all be in place in advance, or this planning commission should impose some restriction. As I mentioned earlier when I was describing how conservation easements work, really the benefit for the person who is donating the property, in addition to their altruism and their desire to conserve the land, there is a significant tax benefit. And that tax benefit only works if the value of the land pre-donation and post-donation is different, and often it is diminished. So you can think of other conservation easements that you might be aware of. There are some parks along the Ohio River in Flood Plain where conservation easements have been used in the past. So restricting that property to open space at this time would make that donation less advantageous and therefore less likely, which is why at this time, we can talk about our intent, and we've spoken to you about our intent because we think it is some, you know, in the interest of transparency. But I don't think that this commission should restrict the use of lot five at this time. So with that, I think that we have demonstrated compliance with the zoning ordinance, with the subdivision regulation. We've demonstrated where we have asked for variances and waivers, that those are based on good rational circumstances, and you've heard the testimony of the fire marshal concerning fire mitigation. So I'd ask that you approve the subdivision as presented to you with the additional condition regarding residential building permits on lots four, five, and six. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashburner. All right. Mr. Fisher, you're up.
All right. I guess we're going to take each of these individually, correct? Do you want me to just go through the variance one first?
Let's go ahead and frame those up one by one, I think is probably best.
Okay.
But before we launch into motion making, we'll search for some discussion among the commissioners as well.
All right. So the first one before us is we'll go through the variance. So you've heard evidence and testimony. On page three in your staff packet, there are motions for approval as well as denial of the variance. So they are asking for variances on lots one through three of a 300-foot road frontage variance. 300 feet is required for those lots being over two and a half acres in size. They're asking for a zero foot on the road frontage, so a 300-foot request on lots one to three. And then lot four would have a 200-foot request on that variance, as they do have 100 feet of road frontage on on that piece of property. And then conditions of approval on the variance would be it only applies to the plan presented at the January 28, 2025 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fisher. All right. Commissioners, discussion, questions? If there is none, the floor is open for motion making. Ms. Nassar.
Here we go. Everybody's looking down. All right. Regarding docket DP, docket PZ 25002, regarding the variance request for lots one through three to road frontage width of zero feet, so a 300-foot variance, and lot four to a 200-foot request for variance. I do make a motion to approve based on the land use that has been presented today and the presentation of usage or location by KYTC for this road frontage or for this location of access to the lots. This would be best use of the land and create less hardship on the property itself. I do want to also add the statement of the condition of improvement stated by Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Ms. Nassar. Counsel, do we have an adequate motion on the floor?
Well, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, my concern is that typically when you're talking about a variance or a waiver, you're going to be delving into either A or B of what is listed in Mr. by Mr. Fisher and Ms. Barger in the the proposed motions and findings. So Ms. Nassar, can you flesh out why strict compliance with the regulations would create an undue hardship? You mentioned undue hardship, and I just need, I'm not sure that you fleshed out the reasoning behind that.
From the what was presented today, moving to a different location with and keeping in with the variances required based on the topographical nature of the property would create a hardship in order to access those properties.
From a different location?
From a different location.
I think that's an adequate motion at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Baxter. Counsel, commission, we have we have a motion on the floor with a second. Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Any discussion? Ms. Kraus?
Did we want to include a maintenance agreement for the shared driveway?
That's a requirement of regulation.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Any additional discussion? All right. We will move into a roll call vote. Ms. Edgar? We have, we have lost two participants. Do we still have four of them?
We do.
Okay.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Nassar?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh? Mr. Falvey? Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Kraus? Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
And the motion to approve the variance has been approved on a vote of seven to one. Mr. Fisher, back to you.
All right. Next up is the waiver. As with the last one, you've heard evidence and testimony regarding the waiver. That is a request of a waiver of section 5.7E of our subdivision regulations for having more than three parcels take access from any single street encroachment. And in this case, they're asking for permission to have four, and then there's an existing one off of that as well. On page, I guess I'm on page four now, on the waiver, you have motions to approve and deny that waiver, once again, based on either hardship or design innovations, based on the evidence and testimony that you've heard today. And then potential conditions of approval on that waiver would be the approval applies only to the plan presented at the January 28, 2025 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing, and a shared road maintenance agreement shall be prepared and agreed upon by all parties affected.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Any discussion? Seeing none, floor is open for motions.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Marsh.
In regards to docket PZ 25-002, I moved that we approve the waiver because strict compliance with the regulations would create an undue hardship, given the topographical nature of this area and the creek, the Blue Creek River running through there, and the conditions listed also.
Many thanks, Mr. Marsh.
Mr. Marsh, can you define what you mean by the creek running through there?
The hardship of working around that, that's where I see the topographical area.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baxter. We have motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Ms. Kraus, thank you. Move into roll call vote.
Mr. Douglas? Mr. Marsh? Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Ms. Davis? Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Ms. Nassar?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
No.
Ms. Kraus?
Yes.
And the motion for approval of the waiver is passed on a vote of seven to one.
And now we have the preliminary subdivision plan on page four and five of your staff packet. You do have motions to approve that subdivision plan if it complies with the objectives of that comprehensive plan, our zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations, or the motion to deny that based on any evidence and testimony you've heard today. We do have several proposed binding elements on this one. The approval applies only to the plan presented at the January 28, 2025 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing. There shall be no subdivision of any lot into a greater number of lots without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission. The applicant did, in regards to that one, also mention a binding element on that, that any residential building on those four lots, and I'm going to get the lot numbers wrong probably, but on four, five, and six, thank you. So on lots four, five, and six would come back to the planning commission at the time that any buildings are proposed to be built on that if if we choose to add that. Lots one, two, three, and four will have shall have a shared driveway, and that shall include a maintenance and access agreement as well. Four, the preliminary plan must comply with all established federal, state, and county ordinances and requirements at the time of construction plan approval. And then five and six, the applicant shall follow the requirements set forth by the LaGrange Fire Protection District on the selection of fire mitigation systems, as well as coordinate with LaGrange Fire Protection District on construction inspection during the installation of any selected fire mitigation system.
Mr. Chairman, I think there was some discussion from the applicant's counsel about modifying. I don't know which binding element number, but the one that had to do with lots four, five, and six that you read. So we need to discuss that before we proceed any further.
Mr. Ashburner, can you clarify?
I just wanted to clarify, that was for residential building permits on those lots. If somebody wants to put a barn on on lot six, I didn't think that needed to come back. It was it was really just the residential building lots on four, five, and six. I mean, residential building permits, sorry, on lots four, five, and six.
Thank you, Mr. Ashburner. Mr. Baxter, does that raise the rise to your needs or?
It wasn't my concern, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ashburner had had raised some concerns about that, I think, and as a part of their presentation, and the one thing about binding elements, I mean, if they are imposed, the applicant either has to agree, or if they won't agree, that certainly is in the purview of the commission to vote down the application. So.
Mr. Ashburner, can you come back to the podium for a minute, please? So my understanding of that offer was that it was an expression demonstration of intent was what that was meant to follow up on was the the presentation of permits. Is that correct?
I I'm not 100% sure I understand your question, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So, Mr. Baxter, was that your take on it?
Well, I think there was some discussion of the binding elements, and, Mr. Ashburner, you came up and asked us to substitute some language as it related to those particular lots.
With regard to, yes. So no further subdivision of any lot into a greater number of lots, that's binding element number two. We also said that we would come back to the planning commission for any residential building permits on lots four, five, or six. When I heard Mr. Fisher read that, he did not put in the qualification residential.
I got you.
So I just wanted to make sure if somebody wants to put a barn or something like that on lot six, because the intent is to convey that to an adjacent farm owner, that that would not require coming back to the commission.
Okay.
But a house would.
So are we clear on this yet on this particular?
As long as he's asking that residential permits only.
Correct.
As long as we're clear that that is what the binding element is as proposed, then we're clear on that.
Thank you.
Could I have a point of clarification? Just on lot, you said four, five, and six.
Correct.
Residential permits.
Correct.
So I guess the other deals don't go through, you're looking at possibly a couple of...
So I guess the other deals don't go through. You're looking at possibly coming in for residential permits, back to the planning commission for four and five, and possibly six. Is that what you're saying?
No. No. What I'm saying is there was concern expressed by, I think there was maybe some question by members of the commission concerned by the community about the future use of four, five, and six.
Okay.
So what we were offering is that any -- the property is owned to Ag and Conservation, so any residential building permits that would happen on lots four, five, or six, we would come back before the planning commission.
Right.
But the reason I asked that that qualification be included was because if somebody wanted to use lot six, which we intend, which we believe is going to be used by an adjacent farm owner, and wanted to put a barn on it or something like that, that that would not require planning commission review. That's it.
And you've already testified that basically he would be coming on his property side to access lot six?
Yep.
And not encroaching off of Lot 24.
If he wants to, you know, I can't speak for that property owner. The intent is that he's gonna be accessing that backfield from his property.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All good? Okay. Further questions? Mr. Finney?
He's not in any way offering any deed restrictions on those other properties, is he?
I didn't hear that.
I'm just asking a question.
No, I did not hear any deed restrictions. No, sir.
Okay. In other words, he's not saying in the future that there can't be any building on these properties. In other words, if the owner, the guy who owns the farm property wants to come back and build a subdivision on there 10 years down the road, there won't be any restrictions on that, correct?
Well, that's not accurate. I mean, if he wanted to subdivide the property into residential subdivision, he would have to come back and from...
Sure he would, yeah, yeah. But I'm saying he would not be prevented to do that through a deed restriction.
No, no, sir. And the only way that that becomes a restriction is if the farm is purchased and put in a conservation easement, and then it's subject to the terms of the conservation easement.
That's a different piece of property. That's...
Lot five.
Right, that's five, not six.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure that was clear, that we weren't talking about deed restrictions here.
Can I say something else?
Sure.
Okay. I know we're at the end here. I don't wanna -- the change in condition really, Mr. Finney, would be that normally if you had a lot that was not being subdivided, that was not being subject to any kind of proceeding here, you would just go get a building permit. Obviously, you would still have to work with the fire department, because they're gonna have to review your building permit. What we're saying is on lots four, five, and six, which are the bigger tracks out of this, if somebody seeks a residential building permit, so I want to build a house on it, not a barn, that that decision would come back to the planning commission.
Sure.
So that's the only thing we're adding. We're not saying that it'll never happen, but we're saying that if it does happen, once those lots are sold off, that that person will have to come back before the planning commission to justify that permit.
Wouldn't that just be normal procedure?
No.
No, typically it would just be permit.
Okay.
Typically, they would go to the building office, and if the plans were appropriate, they would get an approval.
For a single house?
For a single house, yes.
Okay, understood.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Short leash?
If what I understand is correct, these binding agreements are going to go with the property. So if I'm buying lot five, what's decided here today affects that in perpetuity, even if it changes ownership?
Yes. Yes, sir.
That might make it less valuable for me. Can we say the binding agreement is only alive for the current owner?
Now, these are land use decisions, and the decisions run with the land?
Period, regardless? I'm just trying to understand, because it kinda threw me a curveball. So, you know, as a potential purchaser of the land, that may or may not make it attractive to me anymore, because even though we plan on putting it in a conservation easement, certain conservation easement, excuse me, certain conservation easements allow you to do some residential building of a house or a barn under very strict supervision by the conservation group. If I'm understanding this correctly, this limits my ability as a potential new property owner to do what I would do if it was any normal piece of property. Is that correct? Am I understanding that correct?
The intent really is not to add restrictions as much as it is add process. So there's concern by folks... Well, this is the wrong venue for you, then.
Well, I'm not saying I -- I'm just, I'm not saying I don't want any restrictions. Restrictions are good. It keeps us all honest. I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify whether or not, if we have an agreement today, right now, and I'm sorry, this is my number one complaint about y'all. I can never hear you. If we have an agreement today, and we go forward with that agreement, if what this body decides today changes that, then I have a different agreement. I don't have the same freedom or situation that I had right now, once they make this decision. Is that correct?
Mr. Ashburner, this was what you were trying to avoid with the caveat that you offered. You were trying to avoid this discussion with that offer, and it wasn't successful.
No, not necess -- well, what I was trying to avoid, and not really avoid anything, what I was trying to do was to provide some assurance that if the plan changed, and the plan is to sell off these properties, and we don't believe there was to be residential use, that if there was future residential use, you all would have to look at it. That does not mean that you, you know, we're adding to that caveat that the building has to be in any particular location, that it has to be any particular size. I would expect that the planning commission would review this in much the same way that it would review any other amendment to a binding element, which is to say, does it comport with the comprehensive plan? Does it comport with the zoning regulations? You know, I mean, as you've heard, with regard to water, you know, there's only so much water that's available. So you'd have to work out whatever you have to work out, just as you would today with the fire department in order to put an occupied structure on the property. So we were not really attempting to add restrictions as much as notice and process.
That's a lot of way of saying yes, I think. So, but again, if I understand correctly, this will go on with the land, this binding, can you remind me what it's called?
Condition of approval.
Right. Which, if I bought the land today, and we had a contract, and I bought that tract today, I would be subject to any other county rules that normally apply. If I chose to put it in a conservation easement, then I would be subject to those rules, which I would agree upon. But I wouldn't have to come before this body necessarily for approval to put a house, if I decided to go that route instead of do a conservation easement. Or even with the conservation easement, I might only have to satisfy the, I don't know, I'm not down with the lingo on all the conservation easement stuff, but the easement body, I wouldn't have to, I would have to satisfy them, but I wouldn't have to then also come before this commission, if it was within the normal course of a residential property. This is then putting extra controls, if I remember Mr. Ashburner's words.
Well, Mr. Barger, understanding what you're saying, the problem is, is the application that's before us today includes lots one through six. Lot five is the one you're interested in. If that was not before us today, then it wouldn't be the subject of what has been offered as part of the binding elements. Unfortunately, the commission has to consider what is before it today, or the matter has to be tabled, and we have to redraw the plat and come back and do it again. But what has been offered is to address concerns that the commission may have with lots one, two, three, and four about the shared driveway, lots one, two, three, I think, as it relates to fire protection and installation of fire mitigation systems. And what has been offered is that there would not be further residential construction on lots four, five, and six without planning commission approval. And recognizing that you are trying to negotiate a deal with the Hearth Foundation to purchase lot five, you know, they, they're the ones who've made the offer, and so understanding that's complicating your life, alls I can tell you is I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Look, I'm not looking at for anybody to solve my problems. I'm just, I was just, I'm trying to understand that that is what's being agreed to at this time, and what the life of that agreement is. That life of that goes with that land, which is a decision for me to make going forward.
Correct.
So that's, that's how I thought I understood it. Thank you for clarifying. I won't waste any more time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I know that you guys did the proposed binding elements, and it was read, but on five and six, I think there needs to be some clarification, and maybe counsel can agree or not agree, where it says the applicant shall follow the requirements set forth by La Grange Fire Protection District on the selection of fire mitigation systems. Shouldn't it say four lots, one, two, and three, and the same for six, at the end of systems, four lots, one, two, and three? If the applicant's attorneys would agree to that, that should be included in that binding elements, just for those lots, because that's what they're asking the mitigations for?
Okay. Led to the proposed conditions of approval, binding elements. All right, further discussion?
Where are we at on that binding element of the barns and such, then? How did we, how would that be part of the motion?
Did we have any modification of it as stated?
You're the one that read the proposed binding element, and the concern, Mr. Ashburner asked that we add the word residential to that. So can you reread it?
How about I read them all again?
Okay.
Since five and six have also changed a little bit. Okay. So the proposed binding elements are: The approval applies only to the plan presented at the January 28, 2025 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing. Number two, there shall be no subdivision of any lot into a greater number of lots without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission. Any residential buildings proposed on lots four, five, and six shall come back to the pla -- only shall come back to the planning commission prior to building permit approval. How was that one? That sound okay? Okay. Lots, number three, lots one, two, three, and four shall have a shared driveway and include a maintenance and access agreement. Four, the preliminary plan must comply with all established federal, state, and county ordinances and requirements at the time of construction plan approval. Number five, the applicant shall follow the requirements set forth by La Grange Fire Protection District on the selection of a fire mitigation system for residential lots one, two, and three, or residential buildings on lots one, two, and three. And then number six, the applicant shall coordinate with La Grange Fire Protection District on construction inspection during the installation of selected fire mitigation system for residential lots one, two, and three.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Everybody clear? All right. So, further discussion? If not, floor is open. This is the preliminary plan. Ms. Nassar, is that you?
That's me. Get to the right pages. For docket PZ-25-002, motion to approve the preliminary subdivision plan as presented today in testimony and evidence, based on the fact that it does comply with the desire to utilize the land in its best use for the, for the county with its comprehensive plan. The binding elements as presented today by Mr. Fisher, which we have six with some additions to those. Is that correct?
As noted, yes.
As noted, shall be included.
Mr. Baxter?
Ms. Nassar, you referenced the comprehensive plans. Is there a specific provision of the comprehensive plan we're relying upon? Sorry about that. Ms. Nassar, do you need some help?
I would love it.
Okay. If the commission would do the honors, it would be, it complies with the objectives of GO LU1, and also objective LU1-2, which is utilize a development review process to ensure that future land uses are incompatible, which I believe this does, and also the management development in areas of environmental concern are limited to potential. And also LU1-3, establish development priority areas, provide incentives compatible development proposals within these areas. And LU1-4, encourage to continue to use the land for agriculture, farming, dairy, and pasture, wildlife habitat, providing flexibility in zoning and subdivision, and plan review. Do you adopt those as part of your motion?
Yes, I do.
Then we have an adequate motion, Mr. Chairman.
I will second the motion. We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Move into roll call vote.
Ms. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Nassar?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar, and the motion for approval of the preliminary plan has been approved on a vote of eight to zero. All right, guys, time for a break. Okay? Try to get it back here by three. Or are we gonna go across the way here for, we've got some sandwiches being delivered across the way, guys, so make the turn a little bit quicker. I'm sorry? Let's go with 30 minutes on the break, okay? 30 minutes with sandwiches present. Yeah.